Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the resumption of the Glendale City Council meeting for June 24th, 2025. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Dasadurian.
Here.
Bratman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, and our invocation will be delivered by Chaplain Dante Cardy of the Glendale Police Department.
Thank you so much for the invitation. As I was trying to prepare for today, I thought, what could I say that would be of any benefit? And I chuckled, and I thought, I don't even know why anybody gets into politics anymore. When you look at the news and the media, it's just painted in such a depressing picture. And I thought, maybe that's a little bit like law enforcement. And I've only been a part of the department for about 18 months. But as I've sort of gone through, I've been impressed with how much our officers actually care. They care about our city. They care about the people who make up this city. They care about the job. And the interesting thing about that is they all have different backgrounds, different beliefs, different values. Yet, when they come to work, they come to protect the city. They work together despite those different backgrounds. And I thought, man, sometimes if society as a whole could be more like that, regardless of your background, regardless of your beliefs, you would care, and you would come to know that the people walking alongside you also care, although maybe a little bit different, that they all care and they want to make society better. So that is my prayer today, that we would all care and treat each other like so. So I know much you pray with me, or take a moment of reflection while I pray in what is my faith tradition. God, so grateful to be here, grateful for the city that we get to serve. God, today, I hope that you would guide our discussions, guide our decisions. Lord, we pray for wisdom and discernment as we get to proceeds to things that help the city of Glendale. Most of all, God, I pray that we would care. Care for our neighbors, care for those who serve alongside us, even care for those who we may disagree with or have different opinions. Lord, that caring would be the thing that would guide our hearts, and that when we care and work together, we will be able to achieve great things. I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Madam Court, may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the June 24th, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on June 20th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is the next item at 3A?
Next, our presentation is on appointments. The first item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 1st, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. We only have one meeting next week in the evening. That's the City Council meeting. There's four items on the action item agenda. The first is from the City Attorney's Office. It'll be related to the review of the mayor's selection process. Public Works will have a report related to the preservation and reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanitarium site. The Fire Department will have two items. The first will be seeking authorization to dispense with competitive bidding and standardize some medical equipment for supplies from Teleflex Medical Supplies. The next is standardization of Knox Corporation products. And that actually is it for next week.
Thank you. We were in closed session just prior to coming out, and I'd like to go to the city manager to ask him if he has anything to announce.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as a matter of fact, I do, with a great deal of excitement and certain degree of relief, that I'm able to recommend appointment of three department heads this evening. All three are here. We start off with Director of Finance Department. Having gone through a nationwide recruitment and search twice, I'm very pleased to introduce you all to Jack Liang. Jack Liang is a mission-driven public finance leader with nearly two decades of public sector experience, including executive roles at the city of Portland, Washington County, and Clean Water Services in Hillsborough, Oregon. Most recently, Jack served as Chief Business Operations Officer at Clean Water Services, where he was a key advisor to the CEO, leading strategic planning, long-term financial planning, capital investment, and business opportunity development for one of the largest public utilities in Oregon. Prior to that, as Chief Financial Officer for Washington County, Jack oversaw a $1.5 billion budget, a $1 billion investment portfolio, and led funding strategies for major capital projects and operational initiatives. Jack is a certified public accountant, CPA, a chartered global management accountant, and holds a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Portland State University and an MBA from the University of Washington. He's also an active member with the National Government Finance Officers Association. He's deeply committed to aligning financial strategy with community priorities and brings with him a track record of collaborative leadership, transparency, and operational excellence. I'm excited to welcome Jack to California, first of all, and have him join our team, bringing his broad expertise and energy to serve the Glendale community. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I recommend approval of my appointment of Jack Liang to the Director of Finance for this great city of Glendale.
Thank you. And before you say, "I do," let's make the proposal. And I recognize Councilmember Asaturian.
Actually, can we have him come up? Because I want to get something right. Your first name means world, but how do you pronounce it?
Oh, my legal first name is Shijie, S-H-I-J-I-E, for the record.
Okay, I'm gonna try. All right.
I do go by Jack professionally, so.
All right. Do you want Jack, or you want the world?
Jack is just fine.
All right. I move that person to Article Section 4 of the Glendale City Charter. The council hereby approved the city manager's appointment of Jack Liang as Director of Finance effective July 7, 2025. Mr. Liang's job duties shall be as defined in the job description and specification for Director of Finance, and shall include the duties of Director of Administrative Services, as described in the city charter included in Article 6 thereof.
Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmembers Dasadurian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Will you? Congratulations.
Thank you. I will. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members, City Manager Galanian, and the members of the Glendale community. It is truly an honor to receive this appointment as Glendale's Director of Finance. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to join a city as dynamic, forward-thinking, and community-oriented as Glendale. I am genuinely excited to take on this responsibility as a Director of Finance. And I want to sincerely thank you for the trust and confidence you have placed in me in this role. Over the past two decades, I have been fortunate to serve multiple public entities in a finance leadership capacity in Oregon. And in each one of those roles, I have found that financial leadership, when grounded with community priorities, can be a very strong catalyst for community progress. And that is what I ground myself in my work, in the financial leadership I do. And no matter when I'm managing a complex set of budget, funding critical capital projects, or improving financial sustainability through thoughtful long-term financial planning, which I know that Glendale is interested in, I can see that always grounded with the community priorities as well as council philosophies. And this always helps communities thrive. So what makes this opportunity so special to me at Glendale is I have been observing Glendale's council meetings as well as budget study sessions. I can tell that Glendale is a city not only that manages its resource responsibly, but it does that with a heart, with a purpose, and with a commitment to the community's need. And I truly find that tying directly to my personal value, and I would like to be a part of that. I have always gravitated toward public service because I believe local government is really where we can make the most direct and lasting impact to people's lives, as you all know better than I do. And I would like to dedicate my time and my effort and my skill and expertise toward that for the community of Glendale. This is really where the rubber meets the road and where the policies meet the lives of many community members. So I look forward to working collaboratively with the City Council, City Manager's Office, the department leaders in Glendale, and most importantly, the dedicated finance team that has been working hard at Glendale. And together, we will continue to strengthen the city's financial position with transparency, accountability, and the spirit of service. I am honored to be here, and I'm eager to get to work. Thank you again for this incredible opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. We're glad to have you on board. Mr. Galanian.
Yes. And next up, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, is the appointment of the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, GWP. Similar to the Finance Director position, we did conduct a nationwide search and recruitment, and luckily ended up with an internal candidate who scored number one through the three sets of interviews. And he is no stranger. He really doesn't need an introduction, but I'll read a short bio. Scott Mellon began his engineering career in aerospace, developing electrical systems for multiple aircrafts. Inspired by what he learned there about different types of energy resources and the implications for a smarter electric grid, he decided to join the municipal utility sector in 2001. We won't mention the name of that utility. Over his 25 years of working with local communities to address the need for reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy, he has built a robust background in managing complex power supply projects with attention toward maintaining environmental stewardship. Most recently, as Glendale Water and Power's Assistant General Manager of Power Management, Scott has had the opportunity to lead critical projects to support the Glendale community, including the Grayson Repowering, which will add significant battery storage capacity to the grid, six community-based solar array installations, and the Shoal Biogas Project, which will provide up to 10% of the system load utilizing a local renewable resource. Regionally, he has been directly involved in finalizing the Elon Solar Project in Kern County and the IPP Repower Project focused on utilizing green hydrogen to supplement a natural gas power generator in Utah. Mr. Mellon also oversees the newly created Clean Energy Group, which implements and manages programs that assist the community in meeting energy efficiency and conservation goals. Scott has a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering from UC Irvine, where he earned a specialization in power system design and was a team lead on hybrid electric vehicle project competition. I hope they won. No. He's a licensed professional engineer in the state of California, and his spare time enjoys hiking, biking throughout the Southern California area, and reading up on the latest energy technologies. That's it. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I respectfully recommend your approval of my appointment of Scott Mellon to the position of General Manager of Glendale Water and Power.
Mr. Bratman.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that pursuant to Article 4, Section 4 of the Glendale City Charter, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Scott Mellon as the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Dasadurian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Mr. Mellon, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, and Mr. Galanian. Thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm deeply honored and humbled to accept the position of General Manager for Glendale Water and Power. I want to express my sincere gratitude to you all for your confidence in my abilities. I also want to thank the entire leadership team for their support and guidance throughout this process. We have a very dedicated group of leaders here in Glendale, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of them. I think it's no surprise to anyone that Glendale Water and Power is at an inflection point, a time of significant transition that is being influenced not only by the needs of the community, but by politics, regulation, and legislation which requires the utility to become not necessarily more of what it used to be, but what it now needs to be. A necessary rethinking of the methods that have brought us to this point over the last 100 years, so that we can reimagine ourselves in preparation for the next 100 years. There's no small endeavor, especially if you mean to maintain our core tenants of reliability, sustainability, and affordability. But I believe that our GWP staff are ready for this challenge. I believe in the agility and passion of our executive team. But most importantly, I believe in the strength and commitment of our support and field staff who on a daily basis ensure that the Glendale community has fresh water and consistent electricity. Personally, I can commit to you that this utility will seek effective means to establish a more sustainable future, and that this effort will become part of our utility DNA, so that we can continue to build on it. I look forward to the challenges we will face together and the opportunity to implement the innovation the innovation and growth Glendale deserves. Thank you once again for this opportunity.
We know you'll do a great job, Scott. Well, I guess that concludes our appointments for the evening. Where are all the firefighters here? I think there's one more. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Member City Council, last but certainly not least, is the appointment of our new Fire Chief. Again, Chief Brooks needs no introduction, but I will read a short bio for the audience. Jeff Brooks is an accomplished fire service leader that has been serving as Acting Fire Chief for the Glendale Fire Department for the last four months. In that role, he leads all department divisions, ensuring operational continuity and alignment with citywide public safety goals. With more than 20 years of distinguished service, Jeff has consistently demonstrated a strong commitment to public safety, operational excellence, and community engagement. His extensive experience spans roles such as Deputy Fire Chief, Battalion Chief, Training Captain, and Fire Captain Paramedic. He's also served on a federal Type One Incident Management Team, each role reflecting his dedication to advancing fire and emergency services. Jeff holds a Bachelor of Science in Fire Administration and is currently pursuing a Master of Science in Fire Executive Leadership and Emergency Services. He has a proven track record of developing and executing programs that enhance safety, preparedness, and service delivery. Jeff's leadership philosophy emphasizes safety, mental wellness, operational efficiency, and professional development. He fosters a culture of accountability, resilience, and continuous improvement, ensuring the department remains mission-ready and aligned with the evolving needs of the Glendale community. Beyond his professional life, Jeff is a devoted husband to his wife Najia and a proud father to their daughter Nara. In his free time, he enjoys bike riding, dirt biking, fishing, and spending quality time with his family. That said, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, I respectfully request your approval of my appointment of Jeff Brooks as the newest Fire Chief of the Glendale Fire Department.
Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you, Mayor. It is with pleasure that I move that pursuant to Article Four, Section Four of the Glendale City Charter, the council hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Jeff Brooks as the Fire Chief of the City of Glendale. This motion constitutes the written statement of recognized attainment required by Article 24, Section Five, Subsection Two of the Charter.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatirian.
How committed are you to this fishing?
It's recreational only.
How often?
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for not forgetting the last appointment. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Najarian, and council members. I'm deeply honored and grateful for the trust placed in me to serve as the Fire Chief for the City of Glendale. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for your leadership and your continued commitment to public safety. Your support has been essential in ensuring that our department remains strong, well-rounded, well-resourced, and responsive to the evolving needs of this community. This city has been my professional home for over two decades, and I'm proud to continue serving a community and organization that means so much to me. To our city manager, my boss, and fellow Fisher person, thank you for your leadership, mentorship, and support. Your guidance has been instrumental in my development, and I appreciate your confidence in me. To our executive team, thank you for your partnership and support. It's a privilege to work alongside such dedicated professionals. To the members of Glendale Fire Department, a few who are here tonight, thank you for your professionalism, dedication, and the trust you've placed in me, especially during my time as the interim Fire Chief. To our command staff, thank you for your leadership and collaboration. Your work is essential to keeping this department strong and focused on our mission. I also want to acknowledge the leadership of the Glendale Firefighters Association. Thank you for your ongoing partnership and for working collectively in support of our personnel and the continued success of the Glendale Fire Department. To the Glendale community, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I remain committed to protecting the city with integrity, fostering transparency, and building lasting trusted relationships throughout this great city.
We'll just, we'll stand up behind you.
And finally, to my family, led by the 10-year-old, thank you for your constant support throughout this journey. To my wife Najia, thank you for being my anchor and my greatest source of strength.
Yeah, you stay there.
I wouldn't be here without your love and encouragement. Thank you again for this incredible, incredible opportunity, and I look forward to the work
We'll just, we'll stand up behind you.
ahead.
We're lucky to have you, Chief, as well as Scott and Jack. I hope you stick around, Jack, while we discuss the budget, okay? Welcome to the Glendale family.
Mayor, if you would allow a minute for, for the newly appointed department has
You can't, you're on the clock now.
to take pictures with their families in front of the podium.
We'll just, we'll stand up behind you. I hope you stick around, Jack, while we discuss the budget, okay? You can't, you're on the clock now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, where did we leave off?
We are at Presentation and Appointments, Item B. Professional Development Center check presentation to City of Glendale for Workforce Training Grant.
Hi there. That's a big check.
It's a big check. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Clerk, and Members of the Dais. This evening with me are GCCD Board of Trustee members, Ms. Desiree Portillo-Ravenoff in the audience, and Dr. Savan Benlian. In December of 2021, the Professional Development Center of Glendale Community College was awarded a highly competitive statewide grant through the California Employment Training Panel. This one-time California Community Colleges Fund grant was part of a $15 million allocation from the State's General Fund approved by the Governor. The funding aimed to provide future-focused, sustainable economic development and deliver high-quality, equitable, and inclusive job training through collaboration with business, labor, and government. Thanks to the flexibility of this special grant, the PDC was able to expand its reach and shift resources and train a greater number of individuals under less restrictive guidelines. Notably, the funding made it possible, for the first time in PDC history, to provide state-funded training to nonprofit organizations traditionally excluded from such programs. Among these was the City of Glendale, with whom the PDC partnered to upscale over 300 city employees. These employees received training in lean six sigma customer, excuse me, customer service and project management, just to name a few. This collaboration also enabled the city to earn more than $60,000 in valuable training funds which can be used for future workforce development. We are here today to present a check to the city. We greatly value our partnership with the city and would like to formally recognize and thank Glendale City Manager, Mr. Rubik Galanian, for his commitment to upskilling city employees. Ms. Paula Adams, Chief Human Resources Officer, who along with her team was instrumental in coordination and facilitation of the training sessions, and Ms. Elena Bulbulian, Chief Innovation Officer, who played an important role in collaborating with the PDC and bringing on the city departments together to implement this grant. We look forward to future collaborations and continued growth together as we collectively invest in the development of a skilled, agile, and empowered workforce. The Professional Development Center of Glendale Community College remains committed to supporting the City of Glendale, City of Glendale's dedication to excellence in public service. Together, we are not only strengthening the local government, but also setting a standard for innovation. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to future partnerships together.
Congratulations.
And here is our lovely check.
Oh, you're going to hand it? Okay.
Well, if you wish to accept, please come on down.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You keep the check.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is a proclamation declaring June 12, 2025, National Control Room Workers' Day honoring Water and Power employees.
And who is going to accept this for the National Control Room Workers' Day? Hi, come forward. Come on forward.
How you guys doing?
Hi, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Adrian Mizakanyan. I'm a power system operator one, working for Glendale Water Power Dispatch.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mizakanyan. This is National Control Workers' Day. Actually, June 12th was Control Workers' Day. And, oh, here are your colleagues. Hi there.
Hello.
Control Room Workers' Day.
Yeah.
I can only imagine the array of switches and dials and gauges in front of you during your workday. Here's the proclamation. Whereas Water and Power Control Room employees are highly trained professionals entrusted with the continuous operation of the vital systems that deliver clean water and reliable electricity to our communities, and whereas these dedicated individuals work around the clock, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, to monitor infrastructure, respond to emergencies, and ensure the seamless delivery of essential services, and whereas their expertise, swift decision-making, and calm under pressure are critical to public health, safety, and quality of life, and whereas the control room is the heart of the utility operations, the room where it happens, and these employees are the unseen heroes who keep our water flowing and our lights on. Now therefore, I, our Najarian, do hereby proclaim June 12, 2025, as National Control Room Workers' Day in special recognition of the exceptional service and unwavering dedication of the Water and Power Control Room employees. We encourage all to acknowledge and celebrate their essential role in powering and sustaining our communities. And if Mr. Carpetian would please do me the honor of presenting this.
Oh, for the one.
No, never, never. Okay. Do you have a speech or anything, you guys? Would you like to say anything? A few words today. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, what's next up, Madam Clerk?
What happened to the speech?
Next.
They opted not to.
Would you like me to proceed? Next are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. We do have speakers on a number of the items on 4B, 4D, 4E, and I think that is all.
4B, 4D, and 4E. So that leaves us for A, C, F.
I'll move the remainder.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatirian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Let's read 4B into the record.
4B is Glendale Water and Power regarding award of a professional services agreement to Harper and Associates Engineering, Inc. for water storage facility rehabilitation projects. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a three-year professional services agreement with Harper and Associates Engineering, Inc. to act on behalf of the city as owners, engineers specializing in the design and oversight of city water storage facility rehabilitation projects for a total not to exceed amount of 400
Okay. Do you have a speech or anything, you guys? Would you like to say anything? A few words today. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, what's next up, Madam Clerk?
What happened to the speech?
Next.
They opted not to.
Would you like me to proceed? Next are consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. We do have speakers on a number of the items on 4B, 4D, 4E, and I think that is all.
4B, 4D, and 4E. So that leaves us for A, C, F.
I'll move the remainder.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Let's read 4B into the record.
4B is Glendale Water and Power Regarding Award of a Professional Services Agreement to Harper and Associates Engineering, Inc. for Water Storage Facility Rehabilitation Projects. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a three-year professional services agreement with Harper and Associates Engineering, Inc. to act on behalf of the city as owners, engineers specializing in the design and oversight of city water storage facility rehabilitation projects for a total not to exceed amount of $450,000.
Okay. There's a card on this, a speaker?
Is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I've mentioned this before in these PSAs where they are multi-year agreements that especially given that in this year, three of the council members are in their last year in office, and they may not be returning after 2026, that I feel that it might be in the best interest not to execute agreements that are more than, you know, two years, I would think maximum, so as not to saddle another city council with your spending that they may not agree with. I also think that when you are executing these PSAs that are multi-year and that are not to exceed a certain amount, it always seems that you come back and ask for more money. So it always seems that these things are never etched in stone. This applies to every PSA I've almost ever seen, that there's an agreement, there is a contract. Oh, guess what? We need more money. And then when you're adding more money and you're attaching it to several, you know, three years, sometimes even five years, I think that that doesn't serve the city very well. Doesn't serve the people very well, especially given the fact that we are in dire straits as far as our budget is concerned. I don't think that you should be very loose and fast with money, and I consider going into agreements, not just for this agenda item, but going into agreements that are three years or more, I think, should not be entered into. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I make a clarifying comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Galanian, you may.
Just for the sake of clarification and transparency, this particular project is requesting to hire a consultant who will oversee, actually be owner's engineer, it will be GWP's engineer, overseeing the design and the implementation of two water tank rehabilitation projects. So this entire project is going to take three years from the onset to design to bidding to actual installation and rehab, and that's the reason why we are recommending a three-year contract. Anything shorter than that would mean that we have to go through the process again, come back to council, and request an award for a second time.
Thank you. Is there a motion for 4B?
I'll move the item.
Excuse me, I put in a card.
On 4B?
Oh, I just got it. Yeah, we have one more speaker.
Have you waited a little longer to submit it, Mr. Moehill? Okay, Mr. Moehill, it is your floor for three minutes.
Given to council members, my name is Mike Moehill. I'd like to thank Beth Brooks for what she's done. You know, I've been coming here for many years, and I've heard, you know, often, two- and three-year, four-year contracts, and like she says, a councilperson or people will not be there for the next council period. They'll be elected, they'll be voted out of office. I'm here to support her, because when she brought this to my attention the other day, I said, wow, what a neat concept to bring this up so that the public is not saddled with expenses who knows what, because you know, the next council, the council members, may not agree with the previous council. So I think going forward, I like what Ms. Brooks said, and I support her. Thank you.
We had a motion at 4B. We had a second. Let's take roll call, please.
Yes, council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next up was 4D?
Yes. 4D is Public Works Regarding Amendments to Municipal, to Multiple PSAs for Additional Design, Engineering, and Construction Management Services for San Fernando Road Beautification Phase Two Project and On-Call Engineering Services for Public Works Project. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a contract amendment to contract number 8001984 with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. to increase the contract amount by $59,660 to perform additional landscaping and irrigation design for the San Fernando Road Beautification Phase Two Project. We have one card on this item, 4D, and it's by Beth Brooks.
Sorry, I'm a broken record, but it's the same thing, and it's not really about 4D1. It's about the whole thing, because it all adds up to $1.3 million of additional monies, once again, over a number of years that I wish that you would go through a fine-tooth comb and say that the next city council shouldn't be saddled with that, unless it's something where Mr. Galanian said that it's gonna take three years. I understand that, of course. Of course, you can't argue with that. That's perfect, and it makes perfect sense. But if that is not what is the situation, and it's just a... I don't know, if you're smiling at me, you're smiling behind me.
I'm always smiling at you, Ms. Brooks.
You're always smiling at me, yes, yes. I actually do know that. That if it's, that's not the case, as Mr. Galanian said, which that would make sense, then I don't think that you should approve so much money, and especially over a certain number of years. I just don't think you should do that. I don't think that's fiscally responsible, especially for something that is not necessarily critical. It's mostly about beautification, so if, for things about beautification, I think you may be able to hold off on that till the next city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moehill? Oh, you two guys are teaming up now. All right. All right. We know you agree with her.
You bet. I'm, I'm, I agree with Beth. It's refreshing to have a new city gadfly in the audience tonight. Beth is doing a great job. Beth, thank you for keeping everybody on their toes. She's a fiscal conservative, and she's right. She brought up stuff tonight I never thought about, but she's right, isn't she? I mean, how would you feel being saddled with a contract, and you become the new councilman, and you're stuck with what happened with the previous councilperson, and he was voted out of office? And we have three councilpeople up for reelection in 2026, Bratman, Asadre Yan, and Najarian. You keep promising. Yeah, well, let's see what happens. Promises made, promises kept, we don't know, but we'll see. Anyway, my point is, I'm here to support Beth Brooks. Thank you.
Thank you. 4D, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Carpetian.
I'm going to abstain from 41, because this project was approved when I was not on the council. This is for the second phase of the San Fernando Road Beautification Project. And for the record, there is no bike lanes on the second phase, so let's not assume anything else. But just because I was not part of it, and I had my issues of the way this project was designed, I'm going to refrain from, or abstain from voting on 4D1.
Okay. At the appropriate time, you may state and be noted. Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Can we take 4D1 separately?
Oh, you want 4D1 separately?
That's what I was saying.
Is that okay to do, Madam?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I think you want to abstain from the whole.
No.
I'll move 4D1.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we did win some awards for this, right? Was it a state?
It was for Phase 1, yes.
Roll call, please. 4D1.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Stained.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Is there a motion for 4D2 and 3?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
4E?
No, we're taking roll on 4D2 and 4D3.
Can you take 4D3 separately?
Okay, then let's just do 4D2.
Mayor Najarian, I don't think I read that portion into the record. May I read it?
Okay, so much for the idea of a consent calendar, where routine matters may be acted upon by one motion, but that's okay. We'll decide what to do next meeting. Yes, why don't you read that in?
D2 is Motion Authorizing the City Manager Designate to Execute Contract Amendments to the following PSAs to provide additional engineering services in support of various PWD projects, a contract number 800222 with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. to increase the on-call traffic engineering services contract amount by an additional $200,000, and B, contract number 8002237 with KOA Corporation to increase the on-call traffic engineering services contract amount by an additional $200,000.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
There's CD.
I'll see.
There's more.
And C, wait. Oh, C, contract number 8002258 with Twinning, Inc. to increase the on-call geotechnical soils engineering and material testing services contract amount by an additional $150,000. And I, D, contract number 8002407 with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. to increase the on-call construction management and inspection services contract amount by $750,000, and E, contract number 8002238 with NV5, Inc. to increase the on-call construction management and inspection services contract amount by $200,000.
Is there a motion for D2?
And, oh, three, sorry. Sorry, three resolution?
No, we're not gonna, we're doing three separately.
Three separate, okay.
So let's take roll. Was there a second? Yes. So 4D2, let's take a roll call, please.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay.
4D3, please.
4D3. Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate Additional Funds for the Metro's NoHo to Pass the Union Bus Rapid Transit, BRT, project.
Is there a motion?
Before we make a motion, Mayor, I know that when this item comes for a more in-depth discussion, I need to recuse myself because of where my home is in proximity to the route. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote as well.
Okay.
I have an abundance of caution.
Let's take roll, please.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
No.
Kasakyan.
Recuse myself.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, what does that leave us?
It's 4E.
E, 4E. Please read that in.
4E is Community Services and Parks Regarding Verdugo Workforce Development Board's Submission Request for Approval of Local Workforce Development Plan 2025-2028. One motion to approve the Verdugo Workforce Development Board's Local Workforce Development Plan 2025-2028. Approve submission of the Verdugo Workforce Development Board's Local Workforce Development Plan 2025-2028 to the California Workforce Development Board and the State of California Employment Development Department, and authorize the mayor and the city manager or designate to execute all relevant documents with the State of California and the United States Department of Labor for the plan's approval, implementation, and use.
We have a speaker.
Yes, we have Beth Brooks on this item.
I'll move the item.
Mr. Moehill didn't want to submit a card?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadre Yan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You did enough reading to last several meetings on that consent calendar. Next up, please.
City Council and Staff Comments.
I will start from my right side and inquire, yes, Mr. Bratman, if you have any...
Okay, I just have one thing I would like us to consider, taking a position on a bill. The bill is AB 306. It's an assembly bill now in the Senate, and I could explain it next week. We'll put it on the, on the new business. But it's a, it's a bill I would like us to take an opposed unless amended position. It's a, it's both an environmental and a local control issue, but I'll give more explanation next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Asadre Yan?
Just two, two comments. One is, I just wanted to say thank you to the community members that helped organize the first trip of 10 students from our sister city, Kapan. It was their first time in the United States, and of course, their first time in Glendale. I'm hoping that this program continues, and we continue the conversations to actually create the exchange program with our school district and our students going from here to our sister cities, and a new group of students coming in. And just wanted to give a big shout out to Home and Admin. This last weekend, they hosted the U.S. Table Tennis at Home and Admin in Glendale. We had national and regional players from all over the country that came to participate. Prior to that event was the seventh anniversary of their Harashk Committee and Program for Kids with Special Needs, and, which was followed by a basketball game. Just wanted to say thank you, and I think they did inquire about what we're, how we're moving forward with the committee, and so I've asked staff to follow up with setting up a meeting with the organizations that were present here last year during a month of, proclaiming a month of people with disabilities.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakyan.
Thank you. I don't have much. Unfortunately, I had to miss the Home and Admin events, but I will say that the Harashk organization, which works with children who have developmental disabilities, is one of the more remarkable initiatives in our community. So anyone who is not aware about this, I highly recommend you familiarize yourself with the work of this great initiative through the Home and Admin or a chapter, the Home and Admin. So my, my issues are a couple. First of all, a reminder, a plug for the CV Fireworks Show that'll happen on July 4th, celebrating our nation's independence and birth. The other issue is, I continue to see on Brand Boulevard these robot delivery carts, and the other day I saw what must have been a caravan of eight of them. These, along with, you know, some small motorized scooters that are being driven on roads and then onto sidewalks and off, are... Unless we do something to clamp down on this, it's going to quickly get out of hand. There must be rules that we have on the books that we can enforce. I can't imagine that it's this hard to find out who the company and the distributor is of these products and tell them that they cannot operate on our streets until we've put parameters in place for them to which operate, and even then I would have questions. But I want to bring that up, and I want to ask staff for an update as to what's being done about that. And along the same lines, you know, we have, you know, we have a number of food trucks parked all over the city, and, you know, I'm sure some of them provide a great service and prepare great food, but, you know, we have traffic enforcement rules for a reason. We have traffic enforcement out there giving everyone tickets, yet for some reason, it seems to me like these food trucks are going unscathed and doesn't seem to be appropriate enforcement on these. And sometimes they're parked right across the street from longstanding brick-and-mortar food establishments. So I just want, you know, to do what's fair and enforce our traffic rules evenly across the board to everyone, including these food trucks, and I'd like to ask staff to give me updates when appropriate as to what is being done to enforce our traffic rules, and if we're unable to control this, how we can bring it into control. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Carpetian?
Nothing for this week.
I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Russ.
Just one more. I wanted to give a big shout out to Tom Lorenz and our staff for putting together an immigration resource list in the different languages. I know it's been a tough couple of weeks in our community. For anyone that's interested, you can visit glandellca.gov backslash immigration... Um, for anyone that's interested, uh, you can visit glendaleca.gov backslash, uh, immigration resource. Uh, also want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Supervisor Catherine Berger. Uh, I connected with her, uh, last week noting that, uh, the language, uh, the resources that were provided for immigration at the county did not include Armenian, Korean, and Tagalog, and she put that forth along with her staff, and we received notice this morning that they have a schedule to roll those out as well. So both the county and the city have resources, uh, should you need any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coincidentally, going off Mr. Kasakian's remarks, I, I ran into, figuratively, not literally, the, uh, programming engineer for these delivery carts and had quite a lengthy discussion with him and actually expressed some of the concerns that council has raised. And I did invite, uh, the company to come before us, uh, at a council meeting to acquaint us with what those delivery services entail, how they interact with pedestrians, crossing streets, et cetera. So hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we can actually bring them up here and get a better understanding about what they do.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that the city attorney's office has completed their research, uh, of the codes and relevant codes and finalizing a memo that we'll send to council as to what we can enforce and what we cannot.
Okay.
So it's forthcoming.
All right, um, so the next item, uh, I understand that the call for artists is out for our utility box program. I've got some cards up there or some slides, and I want to make sure that any decision on the design of these utility boxes comes before council. I find several of them to be offensive. I can get into that later as to why I might think it's offensive. There's a few more. Uh, there's a few more. There's a few more. And I don't think these boxes are intended to be controversial. I think the idea is to highlight, uh, non-controversial or offensive art. I hope that that can come to council, uh, before the final decisions are made. Is that part of the process, Mr. Galanian?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, not, uh, historically or traditionally, but if it's council's desire and direction, we can make that happen.
In the RFP, it states that the artwork has, should be non-offensive and non-controversial. I for one, I, there may be a few others in the community that find some issues with these and other, uh, pieces of work. I just want to make sure that as council, we have a say in it, and it's not left only to the Arts and Culture Commission or whoever. I'm not even sure how it goes. Maybe it comes through your office, I'm not sure how it's done, but I'd like to just be, uh, I think, not me, council should be in the loop and be aware of what's going up there. And.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is that gonna be on the new business agenda then?
Well, I'm not sure. Is that, do we have to change policy for that, or is that?
I don't support that. I don't, I want it, I want it to stay with the Arts and Culture Commission, so I would like that to come back if we're gonna have a discuss. I don't want to presume that we're all in agreement on that.
We can certainly add it to the new business, uh, agenda for discussion and.
Let's bring it.
Direction.
Let's bring it on then.
Okay.
And, and while you're at it, if you can bring up the RFP, because I think it goes hand in hand, or the call for artists, I'm not sure what we're, what we're calling that. Anything from staff?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to the next item.
Next is community event announcements, three minutes, five speaker limit. Per mayor policy, this item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have, uh, several speaker cards, we have five speaker cards. The first one, uh, the first speakers are Azakarian.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council, council members, city manager Rupert Galanian, and members of the community. I think, uh, I forgot to come up here as we were highlighting the appointment of the, of the fire chief, but I'm here today representing Glendale Firefighters Association Local 776. And tonight I stand before you representing over 150 dedicated members of the Glendale Fire Department, and I'd like to offer my full support and my heartfelt congratulations on the appointment of Jeff Brooks as the next fire chief of the Glendale Fire Department. As mentioned before by the city manager, Chief Brooks is a leader who has risen through the ranks right here in our own city. As a matter of fact, I remember him when I was a probationary rookie firefighter and as he approached me in his turnouts at five in the morning with the beanie on. And now we look at him in a full dress uniform as our fire chief. His journey is built on decades of experience, operational experience, and tireless dedication to the men and women of the GFD, and he represents the very best of what we actually stand for. Through his career, Chief Brooks has consistently demonstrated a calm and focused approach to leadership, even during the most high-pressure situations we've had in the city. He's respected by our rank and file. His approachability, his fairness, and his focus on doing what is right for our firefighters and for our department and for the people of, of Glendale is, does not go unnoticed. He definitely puts others before himself. His appointment marks a new chapter for the GFD, one rooted in collaboration, innovation, and continued excellence in service delivery. We are confident that under his leadership, our department will go stronger, safer, and more united than ever. The city council and city manager, thank you. Thank you for selecting a leader who not only understands the operational demands of this role, but also values the human side of the fire service. Chief Brooks brings with him not just knowledge, skill, but also heart and humility. With the ever-growing demand of our city, on the heels of the Eaton Fire and the Palisades Fire, I'm confident that Chief Brooks is going to develop and grow this organization to make sure that the community always comes first. He treats all the rank and file as family, and he treats the others around him like his own blood. So on behalf of the Glendale Firefighters Association, we look forward to working closely with Chief Brooks to ensure our members are supported, our community is protected, and our department continues to lead by example in the region. So I'd like to congratulate you as the council, the city manager, our community, and our fire department, and congratulate Chief Brooks. Thank you guys for the appointment, I appreciate it.
Next speaker is Tony Passarella.
Good evening, uh, council and staff, Tony Passarella. This is for you, Mr. Sasachian, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Uh, um.
Kasakian.
Kasakian, yeah. Mr. Karpetian's with me and Bratman, we know what Mr. Bratman's gonna do. We are being forfeited Silicon Valley fantasy, one wrapped in buzzwords like sustainability and mobility equity, but I'm here to say loud and clear, Glendale is not Santa Monica, and we are not the right city for shared mobility. Let's get one thing straight, this isn't about progress, it's about public safety, public space, and pu- and public deception. These shared e-bikes and scooters may look sleek and harmless, but they are high-speed hazards with nowhere to go. Glendale has zero protected bike infrastructure, in fact, the only protected bike lane that's the city ever considered was overwhelmingly rejected by 76% of the voters surveyed. That should tell you everything you need to know. So where are these scooters and bikes supposed to operate? On the si- in the sidewalks where seniors walk, where children play, where disabled residents rely on walkers and wheelchairs. It's not just dangerous, it's reckless. We are creating, creating collisions before they happen nationwide. Emergency room visits from these devices have exploded. A twenty, 2024 JAMA study shows 80,000 ER visits and from e-bike and scooter accidents. That's hundreds of people a day being wheeled into hospitals with broken bones, head trauma, spinal injuries, and yes, deaths. Community forums are filled with near misses and terrifying encounters, and what's the city doing, opening the floodgates. And let's not fall for the green narrative, the OECD, Northwestern University, MIT have all found that the environmental benefits of these devices is vastly overstated. Shared e-scooters and e-bikes have short lifespans, rely on polluting, um, collection vans and require lithium and, and rare earth minerals. This isn't sustainability, it's greenwashing hustle. The rollout doesn't serve Glendale, endangers Glendale, we are suburban, family-oriented city, not a dense, flat coastal tourist town like Santa Monica. We have hills, we have traffic, we have families walking their dogs, and seniors trying to cross the street. The chaos, e-bikes and e-scooters weaving between pedestrians darting into qua- crosswalks, flying through red lights is unacceptable here. If you push this forward, you are placing residents, especially elderly, the s- disabled and the young directly in harm's way. Council members, the people of Glendale are watching, and many of us are wondering why we are being dragged into a scheme we didn't ask for, frankly, we don't want or need. Glendale's not Santa Monica, Glendale's not a test lab. Don't sell public safety for Silicon Valley dream. Shut this down before someone gets hurt.
Next public speaker is Malcolm Johnson.
What do you have, a movie?
Oh, no, a picture, just a single picture. We had a, well, while she's getting up, we did have a lot of guests in town on June 14th, and in the middle of all that, uh, a man walked up to the memorial and touched a name, which I took a picture of the name, that's what I was gonna show you, and told me a little bit about the soldier's story who died, is a craftsman of his, died in Vietnam. And I started to wonder, where are, is there any place else where these stories are being told or, or, or resourced, and I didn't see anything on the city website, so I was wondering if it would be possible to create a page on the website where local Glendaleans could tell the stories of that they know, make a little show a project of the people on the memorial wall before we forget who they are, because we don't need to carve it, carve the names or dates or anything into the, into the stone, but just on the webpage, so you can look it up and say, hey, this is Michael, he lived in Glendale, he went to this high school, he was at this unit, and he passed away in this war. And that's really all I had to say.
Um, next public speaker is Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members, my name is Mike Mohill. This afternoon I received a letter from one of our subscribers that said the following, Mike, did the city ever publish annual list of accomplishments? List of accomplishments? And you know what came to my mind? A list of not accomplishments. The Americana brand. That has, that is a fiasco. We need accountability. I've asked for it several times. This brand brought up, it was once brought up by former councilman, Vajaka Janian, nobody seconded it. Then later was brought up by Zare Senyanian, and Mr. Vajaka didn't second it. Why? The Pope of Glendale, Rick Caruso, what does he have over this city council that we cannot agendize this and tell the public the truth? That the taxpayers of Glendale are giving him a wonderful gift. We're supposed to be making money on this thing, and I wish you would bring this up in the budget. You probably didn't bring it up in the budget, because you know what? You're all afraid of Mr. Rick Caruso. Now, another thing I was happy to hear that, I understand that the, uh, Geona Fabric is going to become a park, that land. Is that true? I want to thank this council for doing that. After all, previous councils took the, sent, took Central Park and destroyed it. First you went ahead and made it a library. More recently, we have a museum there, and there is no Central Park for the kids to play, there are no tennis courts, no swings, that, none of that stuff, that belongs at a Central Park, not a bunch of buildings. The previous council were too cheap to go out and buy land for a library, okay, or a museum. So I'm thanking, I just, like I said, I'm thankful that someone in council, I don't know who suggested this on the budget, but Joanne would be a great place to have a park. You can have soccer field for the small kids, not regulation-sized soccer fields, junior ones, because after all, you want the kid to get out and play, and soccer is the number one sport for young kids. Thank you.
That was one of our accomplishments, Mr. Mohill, so. You're keeping score, we did, we didn't do, that.
You know what? I'll give you one.
Fair enough, Mr. Mohill. Next, please.
Uh, the final speaker is Dr. Jackie Yeesh.
Hi, thank you, mayor and council. Um, I'm here on behalf of Glendale Environmental Coalition. We are having a cleanup day this Saturday from roughly 8:30 till noon, um, meeting behind city hall, cleaning up areas around. It's been coordinated with Public Works and Parks and so forth of Glendale. Um, we would welcome anybody who wants to participate in cleaning up trash around. We'll provide, or the city is providing trash bags, please bring water bottles, hats, gloves. If you want more information, write to us at contact@gec.eco, and that's it.
We used to have those cleanup days. I think Glendale Beautiful used to sponsor, used to be really well-attended.
Mr. Galanian, can we get that on the calendar? And then if we can, if they are doing it with Public Works, maybe we can get the word out so the community members can also participate. Be great, thank you.
That was Glendale Clean and Beautiful, right? Yeah, we, we participated several times, Margaret Hammond was.
Margaret Hammond.
She was, yeah, she was leading it.
Okay, does that conclude our speakers? Are there more speakers, or we've just run out of the time on it?
No, we have, we had five speakers.
That was the five, okay. All right, next item, please.
Next are action items. Action item A, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Solar Energy Power Sales Agreement. Thirty-year power sales agreement with Southern California Public Power Authority for a purchase of 25 megawatts from Milford Solar to project.
Mr. Galanian.
Resolution, would you like?
Oh, I'm sorry.
One resolution authorizing a 30-year power sales agreement with Southern California Public Power Authority for the purchase of 25 megawatts, uh, equivalently an 8.3% entitlement share of the 300 megawatts contract capacity of renewable solar energy and environmental attributes from the Milford Solar Two project, and finding that the project is exempt from the requirements of, of California.
Okay, now, Mr. Galan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This was a great opportunity that GWP has proact- proactively taken advantage of through collaboration with SCAPA to expand its clean energy portfolio, and, uh, I will turn it over to Iliana Cardenas, our power planning manager. I'll introduce Iliana to you, if you haven't met her before, uh, for a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Najarian. Okay, so the Milford Solar Project is a 25-megawatt project located in Beaver, Utah. We worked with SCAPA to procure this project, we're partners with LEDWP and City of Burbank. We are 8.3% shareholders in the project, it's a 300-megawatt project in total. So the price of per megawatt is 37.75. It's a 30-year contract, and the COD is December 31st, 2026, with the GCOD of December, um, 2027. It is a PCC one product, so it's going to help our RPS, um, environmental framework, and its point of delivery is going to be at the IPP switchyard. So this project's going to increase Glendale's renewable portfolio standard amount, optimize existing transmission usage, fix 30-year term pricing with no escalation, promote the city goal of 100% renewable energy. It's going to increase our PCL by an additional 7% and an RPS compliance by 12%. Thank you.
And that was, no one ever complained about a short presentation. I want you to know that. Especially here. Do my colleagues have any questions? Mr. Brotman.
Uh, not really any questions, but maybe you could mention the pricing and how that compares to other resources that we have in our portfolio. Because it's a very good deal and I want to make sure that the public knows about that.
Yes, thanks for pointing that out. So it's a very inexpensive project at $37. It compares to $90 for our Townsite project, $45 for our Elan project. And I believe we just secured a short-term contract for the summer procurement with LA at $157.
And is this extra, this was not forecast in our IRP, was it? I mean, this is new.
Correct.
This is new opportunity, new supply that.
Correct. Milford was, was not modeled in our IRP.
Okay, all right, that's good. Okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I'll move the item.
We have one public speaker, Beth Brooks.
So I take it that this is a good thing because it's, it's cheap at $37. I don't understand anything she really, you know, just said. I'm just concerned about 30 years and how much it is. Because would solar energy get cheaper, do you think, within those 30 years? Is it good for us to lock in at $37 just because right now it's high? I don't know. I'm just, you know, want to present this out here because the mother load was a 30-year agreement. Because I'm assuming that solar would probably get cheaper, but, you know, I don't know. So, so that's my question about this and how this would affect consumers. You know, and would this increase rates at all for us? I didn't even know Glendale was supposed to go 100% renewable. How does, how is that going to affect, you know, consumers? So I know the batteries are affecting consumers very, you know, very seriously. So that's just my question. Would solar get cheaper? Is this a good idea to lock in for so many decades? Even though it's a good deal now, would it be as good a deal in 10 years from now? And can you get out of such a deal? And that's my questions about this. Thank you.
Newly minted GWP briefly, please, if you could just briefly address those questions.
Sure, thank you. So, yes, there's the potential for especially solar to get cheaper out as technologies improve, as there's a deeper proliferation of solar installations. Same could be true of battery installations or any of the other renewable resources that we're looking at implementing out in the future. However, we have obligations now. So this is to help us meet our renewable portfolio standard obligation. There was a lot of acronyms through that presentation, but some of the key things are the RPS. We have an obligation to meet certain levels in the RPS. And the only way we can meet the percent levels of renewable resource penetration is to actually buy these resources and supply the energy now, so. No problem.
Mayor Najarian, we do have two more callers. The first caller is Mike. Mike, you have three minutes. You're on air.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Mike Borisov. I'm the former City Sustainability Commissioner for the City of Glendale. I live in Glendale currently. I've been here my whole life. I just graduated from UC San Diego, studying called the Paulsen Urban Sales and Planning. And when I saw this on the agenda, my eyes just lit up. This is such a good project. Folks, it's going to cost less than $2 per month on average to increase our solar generation by 30% or at least by from transmission and push us to 50% renewable energy by 2027, ahead of schedule. This is cheaper than producing locally in Glendale. I noticed, Brooke, I have a question about cheapness. While solar can become cheaper in the coming years, it will become more expensive to produce in the City of Glendale because we just don't have as much space as, you know, the middle of Utah. This also means that we're saving potentially millions of dollars a year earlier because the state still mandates us to be 100% renewable by 2045, I believe. So we're getting out of the game. We're getting the infrastructure in place. We already have transmission lines. We're going to get that energy. It's going to be good for us. We're going to save a lot of money and I hope council votes to approve this such an item. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kate Unger. Kate, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kate Unger, Mayor and members of the city council and staff. Just wanted to address the, the item briefly. Looks like a good project. I'm very, very glad to see Glendale moving forward. Obviously, this is a capital project by the developer and this kind of project needs to have certainty of multi-year purchase agreements. I'm sure the same is true of the gas units at Grayson Power Plant. All energy planning is done this way. It would be impractical to do it on a yearly basis. And thank you to the city for securing a good long-term contract for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is all.
Councilmember Asatryan has moved. Has anyone seconded?
I'll second it.
Mr. Brotman, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaderyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is Action Item B, City Clerk Regarding Consideration of Support of State Bills Recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. One motion providing direction on bills as recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women.
Adam, City Clerk.
I will be giving the staff report on this item. This report asks city council to consider four state bills for support as recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. As an advisory board to the city council, one of the functions of the Commission on the Status of Women is policy recommendation. The commission is committed to being informed about current and impending issues, policies and legislation relevant to the well-being of women and girls in order to make recommendations of support or opposition on such issues, policies and legislation to city council. As part of this function, the commission monitors legislation that impact and affect women and girls and advises and advocates on these issues. At this time, the Commission on the Status of Women is recommending support of four bills to council for their approval on behalf of the City of Glendale. These bills were recommended based on CSW's adopted legislative platform, which reflects the following priorities. Women in the workplace, women's health, women's safety, women in the budget, women in the military and military families, women in post-secondary education. On May 12th, 2025, the commission voted to recommend supportive state bills. The four bills supported and recommended by CSW still pending include the following. The first bill is AB 60, which is authored by Assembly Member Popin. It's a cosmetic safety bill. This bill would prohibit, beginning January 1st, 2027, a person or entity from manufacturing, selling, delivering, holding or offering for sale any cosmetic product that contains nitro-musk products. The nitro-musk products have been banned in the EU and are known endocrine disruptors and they impact the, impact fertility and other health issues. The second bill is AB 65, authored by Assembly Member Aguilar Curry. It's the school and community college employees paid disability and parental leave. This bill provides public school employees, including community college faculty, with up to 14 weeks of paid leave for pregnancy and pregnancy-related health conditions. This is a Legislative Women's Caucus Priority Bill. The next bill is AB 798, authored by Assembly Member Calderon. Emergency Diaper and Wipe Distribution Program. Creates a statewide diaper and wipe distribution program to serve families when a state of emergency, such as the recent fires, has been declared by the governor. This is also a Legislative Women's Caucus Priority Bill. And the final bill is SB 411, which is authored by our state Senator Sasha Perez and it's Stop Child Hunger Act of 2025. This bill addresses the gap in access to school meals by ensuring California maximizes federal sun bucks aid and streamlining families' access and schools' administrative process through the implementation of a single statewide application to ensure all kids are getting access to school meals. And this particularly, this is for access during school closures and breaks. And these are the bills that are recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. We do have with us Kiera Ross, our city lobbyist at the state legislature, to answer any further questions on any of these bills. Oh, she's online.
Oh, I was looking for her. Okay. Hi, Kiera, how are you? Do we have questions?
I just have a comment, if I may.
Yes, council member.
Well, I have, I have two comments. One is when the, the proposed bills went to the Commission on the Status of Women and because they meet four times a year right now, the Women's Legislative Caucus had not come out with their priority list just yet. And so the items that are in front of us today are based off of ones that, whether it's staff or Kiera, were able to pull. There's a longer list of bills that are recommended by the Women's Caucus that I would like for us to take on. I didn't, you know, I was thinking about bringing it here today, but I recognize that it requires my colleagues also time. And because it hasn't gone through the commission, and so I'd like for the remaining of those items to be included as part of the longer list of bills that staff is going to be bringing forth for us to take into consideration. There were plenty I wish that we could be voting on today, but I don't want to disrupt anything that the Commission on the Status of Women have done. I also want to take this opportunity, I've communicated this to our city manager as well as to our city clerk. While I'm very grateful and thankful to our city clerk for presenting this and taking on the tasks for last several months, as a matter of fact, because we don't have a CSW staffer. I do think that it creates issues with things that come through the Commission on the Status of Women only because, you know, our city clerk is an elected position. And the last thing I would want, and I know that Mr. Bajin also, Dr. Bajin also shares this, is for politics to play a role in the issues that come in front of this council as it pertains to women. And so, you know, I've had follow-up conversations with our city manager. Whatever the structure may be, I think it's important that the staff member that is responsible for the Commission on the Status of Women be the one that does presentations versus an elected official. Because I think it does set a different precedent. And this, please, I, I'm grateful for the work that you're putting in, but again, this, this should have been something that a staff member that's designated for CSW that's doing. So I just needed to put that out there because I think it creates additional issues and I just don't want that in the space, so.
Okay, are there any questions on the bills before us? Someone like to make a mo, are there any speakers?
We do have one speaker.
Okay.
On, on this item. It's Beth Brooks. And also, we just got a call. Oh, yeah, that's AP. Yes, we have a caller and a card.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was, I mean, I think this is all great, you know, and I think I'm waiting to see the, the bigger list. I was gonna, I don't know if this is part, it's, do, I wanted to respond to something you just said in relation to that Susie gave the presentation and it should have been a staffer because it shouldn't involve politics. But then that's related to the June 14th, having members of the city council and Susie being involved in politics. So I don't know, is this related? Is this like a non-related thing? Can I even bring this up now at this? Probably not, no. This doesn't make sense, right? No, I, I know what I'm thinking of, but, but I'm only responding to something you just said. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, because if there is an issue about, I think it should be okay that she put this presentation together, that it doesn't have to be a staffer to put the presentation together. I don't see this as political, that women should, you know, get all of that. I think that's, that shouldn't be political. That's just common sense, you know, for anybody. So I don't, I don't, I think that that shouldn't be considered that she did that politically. That's just all I wanted to say, yeah. No, I know that you wanted a staffer to do that, but I think that that's just common sense, that who would disagree with that? You know, I mean, it's nobody. And I, and I thank you for putting that together. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have a caller, Elise Kalfeyd. Elise, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and city council members. I strongly support the Commission on the Status of Women's list of bills. They all sound great. I am grateful to the commission for all of their work. And I would like to also express support for Councilmember Asatryan's comment because it's not just a matter of politics, it's also a matter of, of time and staff allocation. I think that the Commission on the Status of Women should have a budget for a staff member to be able to make these presentations and so they could meet more than quarterly, so they could evaluate more bills and bring them to the city council's attention and the public's attention. Again, I support all of them and thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is all for public comments.
Okay.
So the issue before us is to vote whether to support these bills, correct?
Correct.
I will make that motion unless, all right, I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Asatryan. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaderyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Need to see, please.
Yes, one second. Action Item C is Finance Regarding Adoption of Cities Fiscal Year 2025-2026 GAN Appropriations Limit. One resolution adopting fiscal year 2025-2026 GAN appropriations limit.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, I will just hand it over to Mr. Takalian, our interim finance director, for a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Najarian, members of city council. This is the first of three reports tonight directly associated with the adoption of our budget. Back in 1979, the state electorate essentially adopted a constitutional amendment that established what's called the GAN initiative. It was actually named after an individual named Paul GAN. And what this initiative does is set constitutional limits on the, the total number, amount of appropriation that an agency can establish in any given fiscal year's budget cycle. In a very short, concise explanation, the GAN initiative essentially requires you to establish a maximum amount that you can appropriate out of your tax revenues. And the way that you do that is to take into consideration two factors. The first is a change in the cost of living from year to year, and the other is a change in population. As if that's not kind of difficult enough of doing it each year. They also offered four different variations of how to make this calculation. There's two ways you can take into account how you calculate your cost of living and two ways where you can calculate how your population has changed. What the City of Glendale does on an annual basis is go through all four calculation methodology and we always propose adopting the lowest, most conservative amount that we can appropriate. In this particular fiscal year, we ran all four numbers. And whereas the highest amount that we could have appropriated out of our tax revenue could have essentially been $419.7 million, after you take into account our state mandated exclusions, where our, we're establishing our limited 271 million, 272 million roughly. So we're well within or well below the GAN limit. It does not pose a challenge for us. It's really more of a mere formality at this point.
Very well. Any speakers?
No speakers on this item.
Mr. Brotman.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaderyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. 4D, please.
4D is Finance Regarding Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Glendale Water and Power Transfer. One resolution reducing the percentage of operating revenues to the transferred, to, to be transferred from Glendale Water and Power Electric to the General Reserve Fund. to be transferred from Glendale Water and Power Electric to the General Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Takalian will take this on as well.
Very quickly, this is the second step of our budget adoption process. Each year, a major component, one of the major components of our revenue and our general fund is a transfer from the Glendale Water and Power Utility. We only transfer from the electric side. This particular fiscal year, when I say this year, I'm talking about our present 24-25 year, not our proposed 25-26. Based on what our actuals have been, this year, we anticipate ending June 30th with the ability to transfer $29,471,283,000 from the utility over to the general fund to augment those resources. That represents about 10% of the Electric Works estimated operating revenue, well below the 25% that was established in the city's charter.
Any callers or speakers?
Um, yes, we do have one speaker on item 8D, and that's Beth Brooks.
I'm just, because I don't understand the process, and I know I often come up here and I, you know, I read what, you know, I read in the HTML file, and I read it, and I still go, what? I don't, I don't really know what I'm reading. But if you have the revenue, no matter how much it is, 10%, 25%, and you're transferring it to the general fund, where it can go to anything, I guess, why isn't the money being sent back to users as a rebate? Like, what, why are you transferring that money, taking $29 million, and not reducing, and not giving it back to the consumers? Why is it going into the general fund to be spent for who knows, you know, God knows what you're going to vote on? It could be something so unrelated that, you know, people need the money. Why, why would you even, I don't understand. I mean, I know I'm totally ignorant about this, but I just don't understand why you would take $29 million that you have in revenue. People are struggling to pay the electric bills that are going to go up 5%, I think November 1st, I think. And why wouldn't they just get a rebate? That's my question. Thank you very much.
That is all.
Okay. Any questions from council? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Asadarian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item are hearings. Hearing A Finance regarding fiscal year 2025-2026 Citywide Budget Hearing and Adoption. One, hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed citywide budget and changes to the citywide fee schedule. Two, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 City of Glendale budget. Three, resolution modifying existing fees for parking services provided by the city and adopting changes to the comprehensive citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2025-2026. Four, motion to increase the citywide authorized salary position count. Five, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale covered by the Glendale Management Association Memorandum of Understanding, including employee relations exempt classifications. Six, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale represented by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 18. Seven, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale covered by the Glendale City Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding, including confidential, confidential and hourly classifications. Eight, resolution adopting the Glendale Water and Power Public Benefit Program, Programs Plan and the Low Carbon Fuel Standard Programs Plan for fiscal years 25-26, 26-27, and authorized agreements to implement said programs. Nine, resolution of appropriation for fiscal year 2024-2025 to transfer funds from the Parking Fund to the General Fund and the Capital Improvements Fund due to the collapsing of Parking Fund into the General Fund as of June 30th, 2025.
Been a long day for you, hasn't it? I was reading those agenda items. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. Please allow me, starting off by thanking you for your participation, insightful questions and input during four study sessions totaling—
And I will open the public hearing.
All right.
Four study sessions.
—totaling 11 hours of, of presentations, debates and input and questions, plus we had individual budget briefings with council members and, and certain department heads. I also want to extend my appreciation to the entire team, and it takes a village, as you can see in the audience here, starting off with John Takalian as the interim finance director at the helm of this effort, the budget team, every single department, department heads and their budget liaisons and budget staff, who have spent countless hours of reviews, analysis and number crunching. All that said, I'm pleased to propose a balanced budget for fiscal year 25-26 with a $4 million use of general fund reserve that started off with a $34 million deficit, unfortunately, and through collaborative efforts of all the departments, that culminated in a $20 million in savings after we were done, and another $10 million through the efforts and direction from council, that brings us to $4 million gap. This was the most difficult budget review process that I have gone through as your city manager, and the hardest part was establishing a hiring freeze putting in place for 33 vacant positions that resulted in a $3.4 million of savings every year. And believe me, no city manager wants to be in this position, but I had to do, what I had to do to be able to reduce that gap, so we can present a balanced budget for your consideration and hopefully adoption. With that, I turn it over to John for a more detailed presentation and a recap of what we have been through to this date. Thank you.
Thank you for those introductory comments. I'm going to try to keep this presentation as concise as possible. Like the city manager said, we've had quite a bit of discussion, some detailed discussion in a lot of different areas. So today's presentation really will be more of an overview and reflective of the feedback that we received from the consensus of council over the course of those four week, study sessions. Today, we'll be doing our study session recaps. We'll be talking about our different city budgets, our citywide budget based on different type of accounts. We'll provide you a five-year forecast both before and after, based on what we initially showed and what we've landed on. We'll talk about what was causing our structural imbalance. Very quickly, touch on our capital improvement projects and what we amended as part of our discussions. Quick conversation on citywide fee schedules as it relates to our parking fees, public benefit charge program and amendments to our classing comp, or classification compensation. Very quickly, I don't necessarily want to go over each and every one of these bullet points, but this is a reflection you see on the screen of the four different budget study sessions. Our desire this year was to really take a deep dive into the citywide budget, really leave no, no stone unturned, not just so we can, you know, look at finding opportunities for savings, but to truly provide a full, in-depth presentation of what the city's overall financial structure looks like, so this council and this community has a better understanding of it. So we can jump right into our different types of funds. As I had mentioned in previous study sessions, we have six different fund types. We oftentimes talk about the general fund as if all the funds that the city has rest in, in that one account. That's, that's certainly not the case at all. That only represents about a little less than a third, or roughly a third, of our total budget. This year, our general fund sees an increase of about $26.8 million, and we'll talk about what some of those drivers are in a moment. Our special revenue funds, those represent our grants. You see a reduction of about $12.5 million. That's not necessarily because we weren't successful in securing grants, that's only a reflection of a year-over-year change. There was a $17 million grant last year that we had received, and obviously, that's not something that repeats year over year. Debt service funds, that's any debt that we may have that we're making bond payments on or, or debt service payments on. We only have one debt service account, and that has to do with the, the present police building. We're almost done paying that off. Our capital improvement fund saw a reduction of about $12.3 million. That has been a cornerstone in our budget balancing strategies, and I'll talk about that in a little bit as well. And then finally, our internal service fund, that's the fund that, that oftentimes is just much more internal, behind the scenes, represented by things like our fleet, our information technology fund, building maintenance, and medical insurance and liability. So when we first started having these conversations during budget study session number one, what you see on the screen is the five-year forecast we had shared with council. And at that time, we had anticipated that we had a $34.3 million deficit in fiscal year 25-26. That's that second column from the left, or third, second column with the numbers. And before we even came to council, as the city manager described, we had worked with our departments to come up with one-time, short-term, midterm solutions to, to help bridge that, that $34 million gap. That's where we came up with our $20.6 million worth of budget balancing strategies. That essentially meant that if council adopted the way that it was being presented initially, that we would be adopting a budget with a $13.7 million budget deficit. However, following budget study number, session number one, two and three, in the fourth session, we came back, and that was really the, the conversation that led to a series of changes or further reductions that council directed at that meeting. Primarily, what you see there in green, again, in that first column, it says transfer from CIP fund balance. That's $9 million that was re-appropriated from previous projects that had been approved. About $8 million was the Artsakh Project or the Maryland Street Improvement Project. If you recall, there, that was a project that was underfunded, and it came in well above budget. We went through and negotiated with all the vendors and did not see much of a reduction in the total price. Council directed us to forego that project for now. There was also— Karina, help me out. There was one other item there.
Glorietta Field Lighting Improvement.
That's right. The Glorietta Lighting, that was a half a million dollar project. We had just gotten our, the responses to our bid specifications for that project, and it came in under expect, under what we had expected. So we're still going to move forward with the Glorietta Lighting Project. It's only going to cost $300,000 as opposed to $200,000. That $200,000 goes back into, into the pot. Another major change that helped us with our revenues for next year is the proposed parking fee amendments. We had discussed what it would look like if we increased our parking, not just our parking meter rates, but our parking rates in our parking lots, hadn't been done in quite a while. There was a parking study to back up the decision, and the direction from council was to pursue that. So when you take into account the original $20.6 million that staff had proposed, plus the $10 million between the CIP deferrals and the fee increase, what we see now is adoption of this budget with only a $4 million deficit. Recognize, that is a far cry from the $34 million that we started with, but much, if not most, of the maneuvers that we've done this year are truly one-time. Unless we're going to go through each and every year and start depleting, deleting, deferring CIP projects that this council initially approves and the community expects, we're not plugging a $34 million gap that clearly, it carries through to 2930. I think we talked about it earlier, that's going to come with increases in revenues, reductions in expenditures, and potentially even some level of creative refinancing of existing debt to free up some funds and pay that debt off in a longer period of time than annually.
Let's wait until, before the, the meeting, Mr. Takalian requested that he be able to go through and then have questions.
So some might ask, what was the driver of the $34 million structural deficit? This is something that we have talked about in depth, but the primary drivers, you see, while we had an increase in property tax of about 1.2 million, we did have a decrease in a number of other areas. Sales tax. Sales tax is, is down from what we had projected by about $6.9 million. Primarily, that's being driven by reductions in revenue received from the auto sector. We're seeing a reduction in general services and goods, as well as a reduction in the revenue we get from our state and county pools. Utility user tax, that's a tax that's charged against gas, water, electric, telecom, video. We see about a million dollar reduction in UUT, and that is predominantly from the gas, natural gas taxes that we receive. We had a really, really good year a couple of years ago. That sort of carried through last year, but the, the cost of natural gas has decreased, and by virtue of that, our revenue has decreased. We're also seeing a reduction in our building and planning fees, and not as many permits being pulled. That's about $1.7 million loss in revenue there. Landfill host assessment and tipping fees of about $3 million. That essentially is the revenue that we receive from our landfill. We've seen a reduction there typically, and that's primarily based on the amount that's actually being deposited or dumped at the landfill. Just a point of reference, that landfill is slated to close in its entirety in '28, '29 at this point, just based on the tonnage being deposited. So we anticipate that we'll see further losses in the entire amount of our tipping fees, or landfill revenues, I should say, in about two years, three years. And then there was just a host of other ups and downs that resulted in $2.7 million decrease in revenues. On the appropriation side, we also see some increases that are adding to the stress of the budget. On the nondiscretionary and M&amp;O side, $2.5 million increase in things that departments don't have any control over. Primarily, that's the, the cost of information technology for projects that had been done a couple of years ago, but because it takes two years for us to recoup those costs from the general fund, it's being charged in arrears. We also saw increases in the fleet fund, the building maintenance, and the building maintenance fund. Salary adjustments, about $2.5 million hit in that area. That is primarily attributed to our managed hiring efforts. If you recall, last year, we had entered a phase of managed hiring when we realized that we were dealing with some challenges. We did move forward and filled a number of those positions regardless, and frankly, some of those positions were, ended up getting filled at a much higher step than what they had originally been budgeted, based on what the market conditions were and our ability to attract. So there was a $2.5 million challenge there. Reduction in estimated vacancy savings. I've talked about this a number of times. Last year, we adopted our budget with an anticipated savings of $9.6 million in vacancies. That meant that we would not be filling $9.6 million worth of vacant positions. However, and, and we felt that was comfortable, because our attrition rate was high. As soon as people were coming in, we were also losing people on the other side. So that was, historically, had been a trend. Following our collective bargaining agreements last year and the new contracts that went in place, as well as the efforts of our HR department, not only were we able to hire at the, at an increased pace, but we also have been very successful in retaining employees. So whereas we anticipated savings, $9.6 million, we ended up spending 7.2 of that. Good news, bad news, but I, you know, regardless of the cost, it really is good news for the organization and its health. I've talked about GPD overtime, Glendale Police Department's overtime and maintenance and operations, that it has historically been right around $8 to $12 million based on any given year. We've been able to manage because of vacant positions that the department had year over year. This year, for the first time in many decades, we have a completely staffed, fully staffed police department, which means we no longer have that buffer to be able to utilize vacancy savings for overtime or N-M&amp;O. So we've had to face facts and increase their budget by $5 million. $4 million of it is overtime, a million of it is maintenance and operations, contractual services, things of that nature. Some small service level increases, capital outlay, both of them were in the fire department. Medical insurance premiums came in higher, about $700,000 higher than what we had anticipated. And that wasn't an error, that was actually a conscious decision on our part. We adopted a 19-month term for our insurance as opposed to a 12-month term with a long-term vision of aligning us on, on a calendar year basis. That way, if we ever wanted to shift over to a different pool, and we would be able to do it in December. Most all insurance companies that we have, does talk to, have an open enrollment of, I believe, January, whereas ours was, I believe, May or June. have an open enrollment of, I believe, January, whereas ours was, I believe, May or June. And then there were some decreases in our internal service fund rates. That actually means that that was a benefit to our budget. All in all, when you add it all up, those increases, decreases, gets you to about a $34.3 million deficit. Of course, we weren't going to present a $34 million deficit to council. Our job is to provide a balanced, or at least a responsibly balanced, budget. Even if it's not fully balanced, we've made an effort to come up with solutions before we just put it out there publicly. So the $20.6 million in budget balancing strategies essentially is displayed here up on the screen. How we got there on the appropriation side was we decreased, or we canceled the transfer, $10 million to the CIP. That was a one-time transfer. Essentially, what we did was we deferred some projects in '24, '25, freed them up to transfer over to '25, '26, and were able to approve a number of projects that way for '25, '26. This, again, is a one-time solution unless we actively consciously choose not to have any kind of a CIP fund. The fleet fund, we also canceled $2 million transfer to the fleet fund. I have made the commitment here publicly a number of times stating that this will not impact our operations this year. There was a lag in the lead time between when we ordered fleet vehicles and the time we take delivery. We don't pay for it until delivery. Hence, we had about $2 million that we could defer one year and still be able to start making purchases January, July 1st. There was an $800,000 transfer that was canceled for the Building and Maintenance Fund. There was $4.2 million in reductions in MNO and hourly funds that the departments themselves came up with as we met to discuss this several months ago. And we've talked about the defunding of 33 vacant positions. It's important to note here that the defunding of 33 vacant positions was a necessary act because primarily the general fund pays for salaries. And absent us targeting vacant positions, we would have had no choice but to look at filled positions and that, in fact, would have had a significant impact on our operations. On the revenue side, you see that we have a million dollars allocated in new revenues for the parking fees, which I'll talk about very quickly in a moment. We canceled the Maryland Artsakh Project, that's the $8.8 million I referenced earlier, and you see about $200,000 reduction from the Glorietta Light Project that I referenced. All in all, that means, oh, and one last thing. During our fourth session, Budget Study Session, there was discussion about some of the items that had been proposed to be cut. Council asked to have the forestry maintenance and planting cycle retained at six years as opposed to seven. So we went ahead and put $246,000 back into the budget. That means that as of now, we are adopting, proposing adoption of this budget with a $4 million use of fund balance. The $4.2 million in department reductions essentially are listed here on the screen. Give me one quick second. The primary reduction that accounts for the $4.2 was the elimination of the flat stipend. Total in the general fund came out to about $1.6 million. I had previously described that the stipend was something that we did the last three years when we had carryover budgets. Instead of taking individual service level requests from departments, we basically said, "We're not going to accept service level requests unless they're really necessary and significant in cost." But instead, based on the size of your department, we're automatically going to increase your budget by $50,000, $150,000. And I think we had modified that a little bit in future years. But this year, just based on where we are, at the fact that we were cutting anyway, we eliminated the flat stipend, which saved us $1.6 million. Other noteworthy areas where you saw some cuts was about $339,000 in citywide hourly and overtime wages departments gave up. Holiday flag installation and removal, we talked about that, $45,000. That's not going away, that's the cost of the contract that we had. We've worked it out with our public works department. Our crews themselves are going to install those and remove them twice a year as the holidays come along. Same with our holiday tree lighting, holiday lighting along Brand Boulevard. GWP is in discussions with us now about GWP potentially going out there and installing those lights, kind of a feel-good for the department themselves as well. Hotel voucher program, that was for our homeless services. You see that as an elimination of $210,000. I want to note that while that's a reduction, that is money that just was not being spent. There was about a half a million dollars each year in that budget. We've spent about $300,000 of it year over year over year. There was the ability to defund that to the tune of about $200,000 without impacting our vouchers and that we offer people who are on the street in need of assistance. And we talked about the forestry and tree maintenance having been added back. In terms of the vacant positions, what you see here is about $3.6 million in vacant positions that was defunded. Those positions have not been eliminated, I think the city manager has made that very clear. Those positions are residing in a non-departmental account, they're merely unfunded. We anticipate that when we return sometime in the middle of the year during our first quarter budget update, if things change, there's always an opportunity to fund some of these positions. We won't be able to do all of them at once, but there will be an opportunity to fund some of these positions based on council's priority at that point in time. This is the list of CIPs, the capital improvement projects. I promise I'm almost done. This, just to preface the conversation, this is not the entire list of projects. I believe we had, the number escapes me right now. But we had a significantly larger number of CIPs when you take all of them into account in the general fund. What we did for Budget Study Session Number Four was identify any capital improvement project that had general fund monies associated with it, where the budget or the funds had only had less than 10% of the money expended and that project didn't pose a safety, security, or regulatory implication. Based on that and the feedback we got from council, what you see here is the Glorietta Ball Field changed from $500,000 to $300,000. Our Maryland Street and Artsakh alley improvements were eliminated, saving us $8.7 million. And the Active Transportation Implementation Project, that was a project that initially was budgeted at $1.5 million. We were able to reduce it by half a million dollars. And what that project actually essentially does is it enhances modes of transportation in reference to our bicycle transportation plan and the pedestrian transportation plan. With the million dollars, we'll be able to still do a number of projects associated with that concept. Specifically, we're going to be working on the Pacific Avenue and Palm Drive crossings, as well as the South Ferguson Road multimodal improvements. We did have a conversation with our public works department, giving up that half a million dollars. Doesn't necessarily impact any specific project, those monies were not earmarked for anything. But in the future, some of these projects we know will cost well more than what we have budgeted. We will come back to council and ask for an appropriation at that point in time. And perhaps at that time, we'll be able to use funding outside of the general fund as well. I promised to talk about our amendments to our fee schedule. Unlike last year where we talked about all citywide fees, we're not doing that this year. All we're talking about is increasing our parking fees. As you can see here, by adopting the resolution in this staff report, we'll be generating an additional $968,000 in parking revenues. The rates that we have proposed are commensurate with surrounding areas, both public and private. And they were devised following a pretty comprehensive parking study that we conducted following last year's budget adoption process. During Budget Study Session Number Three, we had an extremely detailed conversation on the public benefit charge in the low carbon fuel standards programs. All in all, there was a total of 24 programs that the department has developed, total budget appropriation of $9.3 million for next year. And during that conversation, there was a number of feedback from our council members that I have listed here. I went over them again last week. I assured myself and the team that we had heard council correctly. Council confirmed that, so I won't go into each of these bullet points. But I think the first one is important to mention, the less programs with more meaningful impact. That's something we've heard loud and clear and in a conversation that we've had since our study session, as well as yesterday with the city manager and the general manager of Water and Power, Scott Mellon. We anticipate that we'll be back in front of council in the next few months discussing our programs and changes to those programs in accordance with the feedback we received. Regardless, we're still asking for the $9.3 million appropriation because we can always change programs. There's no need to fund it to the exact amount presently. Finally, we have some amendments to our classification and compensation. What this means is we're making changes to the total headcount that we have in employees citywide, as well as creating new positions. Specifically, the five new positions we are proposing to create are all in the utility in Glendale Water and Power. Two of them, the cross connection control technician, as well as the cross connection control specialist, are both in the water section. Those we have not had previously. However, state legislation over the last year has required us to essentially create those two new titles and hire people in those positions to stay compliant with the water board. So those two will be new titles, new job specifications, and ultimately, two new employees. On the electric side, GWP has proposed the creation of an extra, not extra, but an additional crew for the electrical line mechanics. There is quite a bit of work that needs to get done, far more than what our existing crews can handle by adopting this. Essentially, what we'll be doing is providing quicker service to our residents who have had to wait for pretty significant lead times in order to get services connected. All in all, this only adds seven positions to the overall citywide headcount. All of them are non-general fund related. They're all paid out of the Glendale Water and Power Utility Budget. So what that shows us is our budget going from total position count of 1644 to a total position count of 1651. In relation to where we've been since 2016, you see we were at about 1584, we're 1651. We have 64 more employees today than we did about nine years ago. The final piece of this year's budget is amendments to existing titles. All of these titles that you see on Slide 17 are housed in the Information Technology Department. These are, the titles essentially have become outdated and all we're asking is council's approval to move forward with re-titling these positions. There will not be a change to their job descriptions, there will not be a change to the job specifications or the job bulletins. There will not be any changes to the salary. It merely is calling someone's title what the modern day calls it as opposed to a PC specialist supervisor. That's just an outdated term used in the industry. Along with that, we would be deleting one vacant obsolete position, which is that PC services supervisor. I promised a quick report and a recap. That's probably as quick as I could have done, 11 hours and 15 minutes. Happy to take questions.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions as you were going through. So, the Artsakh Project, the eight and a half million, almost nine million that was taken out. So my understanding, when I was talking about, hey, let's look at big capital improvement projects, my goal with that was trying to reduce, I'm just going to call them cuts because that's what they are. I mean, you're calling them defunded, we can bring them back for the time being, they're cuts. I was seeing them as, hey, we can take this and pause it. And when I meant pause it, I want to make sure that our finance department is also looking at opportunities for us to perhaps finance this project and projects like this moving forward. Not for us to just, you know, put it on the back burner and basically kill the project with this. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here because I don't want to come back like a couple of months later and then hear that staff say, well, no, council gave direction to just forget that project.
I didn't necessarily hear that that way. What I heard was that we were not moving forward with funding the project presently, we're not throwing it out. It is a project that is still viable, it's unfunded. And whether it's the finance department or the department responsible for securing grants or any kind of other financing opportunities, that's something that we would continue working on. And I'm seeing our public works director nodding his head as well, I mean, I think that's what he heard as well.
We do have a new finance director a couple of hours ago. My goal in opening up that conversation was not just for the Artsakh Project, but also really looking at some of our bigger capital improvement projects or any other projects that we may have to be able to bundle. Because I recognize that if we wait, for example, for a grant or for us to do this five years later, that project is going to cost a whole lot more than it is today. And so, and in addition to that, you're not putting an $8 million mark in the year after in your budget, but you're, you know, taking that $8 million and, you know, I don't know how many years you're going to end up paying for that, but it helps you budget better and look at your numbers real time. So I think that was one, and then the... But one of the items that you had talked about, and if you can clarify that because I think just moving forward with budgets, I'd like to get clarity on, was you had noted that some years ago, the finance team and the city council was doing a different kind of budgeting, like programs, versus the way that it's done now, which allowed for council members or during the budget session for us to be able to dive deep into each of the programs and be able to identify what we want to keep and what we don't. Because I think part of this process, as I was asking for additional information, it was kind of, well, we got to go to this department and find out, you know, how much they actually spent and where that budget is, that's where the budget lives for that, for example, for that program. What does staff need for us in order for that to come back? Or is that part of a strategy that our finance director is going to be looking at to put together?
Sure. What you're referring to is a program-based budget. And what I mentioned, I think, at the first or second Budget Study Session, I think it was the first, was that there was one year where we did a program-based budget citywide. Very long time ago, I want to say probably 15 years ago. And it was a pretty significant undertaking. Ever since then, for the departments where it made sense, they've maintained the program-based budget. So I want to say it's the Parks and Recreation, Community Services and Parks, as well as the Police Department, I got the head nod. They have been maintaining their budgets on a program-level basis. Our other departments have not. Essentially, you get money in your salary account, you get money in your MNO and you can move things around as you deem fit within that particular department. So yeah, it does get a little difficult for the finance team to answer a question about how much does this program cost in a department? We don't know that, we would have to work with the department. Moving forward, what would it take? It's a completely different type of budgeting. The level of effort is not impossible. In fact, it's somewhat exciting to think about doing it a little bit of a different way. We've had that conversation with our staff, I haven't had a chance to have that conversation with our new finance director. Don't go anywhere, we'll help you out.
Made a pretty long-term commitment.
Yeah, he did. But it will require some changes in the budget modules themselves. But it is not impossible. Something we're interested in looking at ourselves.
And then, as an example, you had put $968,580 increase in revenues for the parking fees as an example. So is that now built into the revenues that you're projecting for the future?
It is. In fact, I'll add to that, when we talked about the adoption of the general fund transfer for '24, '25, we anticipate that the general fund transfer for '25, '26 next year will be about $32.6 million. So there is about a $2.8 million, $2.6 million increase in those revenues. But we've already accounted for those increases to help plug that $34 million gap.
Okay. And then, I think, lastly, just for now, I had asked our HR director to give me a list of all the current vacancies that was provided this morning. I've asked this question before, provided that there is an internal hiring freeze beyond this defunded. What is the process in place to make sure that this council gets a guarantee that... What is the process in place to make sure that this council gets a guarantee that hiring freeze is not going to be used as an opportunity to delay hiring? But also, you know, I think previously looking at the way that budgets were done and we were using vacancies as the opportunity, I've raised this during the last session as well. And I'm kind of confused at some of these numbers because based off of the spreadsheet, there's 475 vacancies in the Community Parks Department, as an example.
Those are mostly hourly seasonal positions.
PD has 67, and they're not hourly's. There's literally four, five hourly's that are there.
A large portion of that, there are candidates in the academy currently going through the academy.
Like the police cadets going through a...
Those are hourly's.
So you have like police custody officer, police service officer, police communications and trainee, and then a whole bunch of police officers, criminalist. There is a separate batch that says hourly city worker, but, because I think the last report we got was that we're fully staffed, but I'm seeing all these vacancies. Did people retire or?
Yeah, so loaded question, Mayor, Council, loaded question. As far as the police officer classification, for every one of those vacant positions, we have somebody already in the process, and that could be anywhere from in a police academy all the way through to backgrounds. And we're accounting for those, the CM and the assistant CM accounted for those. Some of the other positions you mentioned where the vacancy rates are maybe one or two, those are again vacancies that have a recruitment in process. You mentioned custody officer, we have a recruitment in process, PSO or police services officer, which is going to take over our parking function. We have a process in, in process, recruitment in process rather, to fill those positions. Cadets, those are college hourly employees or part-time, if you will.
And so, how is that determined internally, like based off of the hiring freeze, Mr. Golanyan?
The hiring freeze, Councilmember Satrian, doesn't impact this other vacancies that some have already started and they're in process. The hiring freeze is only for those specific 33 vacant positions.
Positions that you've mentioned, okay.
The recruitments are in different phases, obviously. Some have started, some have put in a requisition, some have gone through interviews, so it's a long process.
Okay. I have one question.
See if there are any questions. I think we have to be realistic as to what we're facing in the next few years. And as it was mentioned by the city manager, Golanyan, and assistant city manager, Tak Talian, these issues are not going to go away. The sales tax, we lost $6.9 million. There's no guarantee that it's going to come back next year and even is going to increase more than that. Because when we keep increasing the sales tax, it doesn't mean that it's helping us in a way. If you go and want to purchase a car, which is, I don't know, average car is what, $50,000 today or $60,000? You look at that sales tax that you have to pay, and you may be purchasing a $40,000 car to reduce that. That's one of the reasons that we got a big hit on sales tax, which is $6.9 million. Utilities users taxed, the natural gas prices went down, there's no guarantee that they're going to come up, and it may even go further down. Gas tax that we build our roads with, that may go down because when you increase, and I heard that California is increasing our taxes by another 40, 50 cents, if that happens, people drive a little bit less, try to save because then we lose that gas tax money too. When you look at the landfill, it's $3 million this year, right? But what is our total revenue that we generate? About $7 to $9 million a year. When the landfill is closed in 2028 or 2027, you're going to lose that big chunk of $8 to $10 million a year, $7 to $9 million a year. And I think we need to consider all of that, and I'm looking at the ways that that $4.2 million was, you know, saved through different departmental reductions, and I look at the Montrose Shopping Park power washing services, $4,000. Graffiti removal, $35,000. Brown Boulevard holiday lighting, which is 15 grand. You added all these little numbers and it became 4.2 million. But we have, we also had this one-time saving of Artsakh Avenue project that we said we are not doing it this year, so that money went back to our overall budget and reduced our deficit. We need to start looking into projects that we have, I think from tomorrow, for this upcoming year, and see which ones we can, we can put in a back burner, the ones that are maybe a good project, but they're not a necessity, and there's so many of them. I don't want to start going through them today, but there are so many of them. The amount of consulting fees that we paid in the last two, three years, I had my numbers done, it was almost $4.5 million, $4.7 million on consulting fees on projects that, they may be a good project, but they are not a necessity today because they will not make a difference in next 20 years. So I think we need to start looking at the projects that are in the pipeline, that haven't, we have budgeted for, but they haven't started yet, and see how can we save. Start thinking about next year's budget, next year, this year from tomorrow. Because other than that, we're going to have this issue every year, and there are not many capital improvement projects like Artsakh Avenue project that we can defer every year and, you know, put the money back into our general budget. So, parking rates, yes, we've done it, we approved it, but I, I'm kind of concerned about the next five years. You know, we don't know what's out there in the horizon. It's not a doomsday, but we have to be careful, we have to, you know, button up and tighten our belts and make sure, in every department, all of us here, make sure that we won't be facing $30, $40 million deficit every year. It's very challenging to overcome that. I think some of these projects have to go away, at least for time being. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I missed the last budget study session, but I did watch it in its entirety. And I want to thank staff for trying their best to make a bad situation seem less so, but it's still, as has been referenced time and again at these various hearings and presentations, we are looking at a very serious financial situation. Some of us have known this serious financial situation has been on the horizon for some time, but during better economic times, there's less of a desire to confront the realities, which is trying to match our expenses to the amount of revenues that we have coming in. Here we are facing this straight in the face, and whatever cosmetic changes and a little bit here, a little bit there, that staff is proposing is not going to get us to a financially healthy and sound place in the future. I am, as has been mentioned, glad that we have a new director of finance who will help talk us through this, because I'll be the first to admit, and I've mentioned this before, finance is not my strongest suit. I try to approach the city finances, although on a much more complex scale like I would my own personal finances at home. If you don't have the money to do it, you can't do it. There are certain things that you may want to finance, sure, but only if you know you're going to have the money to pay for it at some point. Right now, where we are is at a point of serious uncertainty. As was mentioned, we don't know what will happen to sales tax, although one can anticipate that as the economy does well, as there's more consumer confidence, that will come back, but we do not know what that will look like. Online purchings are on the rise, people are going less and less to brick and mortar stores, which is where we receive a lot of our revenue from. People with the lower interest rates are not necessarily wanting to sell their homes and move into another home because they don't want to purchase a home at a higher interest rate. So if they got in at a good point in the market, they're not selling their properties, and about 25% or so of our revenues comes from property tax. Anyways, I don't want to rehash all that, only to say that I'm willing to support the budget as it's been proposed. I noticed, Mayor, that you said you were going to be upset if anyone did not support it. I was tempted to issue a protest vote, but I will say this, moving forward, and I hope my colleagues will agree, we're going to have a lot of people, both internally in the organization and elsewhere, coming to us hat in hand and saying, we want this, it's time for another negotiation, another raise. It is the reason why I asked our unions to be part of our Blue Ribbon Commission to figure and have a front row seat to what it is that we're facing. We are not, I am not going to be supportive of these increases in salaries moving forward. Right now, we have a hiring freeze, but it's only a matter of time before we get into better times, and then everyone says, okay, well, things are great. They're going to continue to be great. We need to be diligent, we need to be cautious, we need to be prudent with how we spend the money and figure out where we're going to be able to get more, because expenses are going to continue to rise as we saw inflation impact us. There are a few things that I do believe, I say this with a caveat, there are things that I do believe impact our bottom dollar and the revenue for the city, revenues coming into the city, one of which is, and also encumbered funds. There was, in the last presentation, a slide, and I've talked to staff about this, which is why I haven't been asking a lot of questions during this item tonight. There was an item about grants to arts groups and nonprofits for, I had mentioned, and I'm waiting for a report to come back, you know, issuing five $12,000 grants, which would only cost us $60,000. I would not expect that to come from anywhere other than the art fee that we have, which is, again, encumbered only for those types of uses. We can't spend it on anything else. I also want to stress the importance of us considering what we can do to impose a higher sales tax on ourselves in the city before the county comes in with a measure that will pass potentially with votes across the county, or we will not be able to control how the other 87 or so cities in the county vote, but will impact us and will take dollars out of the pockets of Glendale residents for other services and needs. It's not a conversation we like to have. We all want to be the people who are making life more affordable for our residents, certainly, but the other option is that it becomes less affordable and that money that we're paying leaves Glendale. So it is something we ought to consider, the timing of it, how we present it to the public, how we communicate our needs. And then, two other minor things, and I'll stop, and I thank you for indulging me. There were items about enforcement of Airbnb rentals in the city and how that is going to be something that we're going to have to, not necessarily, it's unfunded. And then the other item was, and I had written it down, but I forgot my notes in my office, it was about food truck enforcement or street vendor enforcement. These are, I think, expenses that we do need to incur with the staffing that we have in place. I don't know if we need to spend more funds, but again, enforcing these ensures that we are keeping dollars here, that we are keeping the residents that we do have living here safe and happy. Again, we don't want our brick and mortar businesses that are paying funds to the cities, paying taxes, to be struggling, and we are encouraging or helping that along by not taking action against people that are in competition with them. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you. We have two speakers. Would you mind hearing from the speakers first, and then we'll come back. I have some comments, and I'll recognize. Let's hear from the two speakers.
The first speaker is Edmond Hagopian. You have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, everyone. I watched, thank you for taking the time for the study sessions. I watched all four of them twice. It was, I enjoyed it, but I don't think anyone else does. However, I have a background in finance, and I was looking at the budget and also our survey. I feel like the budget that we're about, I know, Mayor Najarian, you want to pass this budget, but I feel like the city is in more dire situation financially than you are informed of. And these cuts are going against the, all the resident satisfaction surveys that were recently passed. These cuts are impacting services that people in the city enjoy using, and also it's cutting staff that, it's impacting the police department, fire department, and other areas within the city. And also, it's impacting the departmental reduction that you mentioned. These are impacting programs that makes Glendale Glendale. I believe, as other council members suggested, the right thing is to de-scope or delay the construction projects that you have. Other than that, I think the only emphasis should be on increasing the revenue for the city. And I won't take much of your time, thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker is Beth Brooks.
I'm glad he spoke before me because everything he said, I would totally agree with, because you are removing those little things that make, you know, Glendale Glendale, and I didn't see increases in revenue. One thing that somebody did mention, I didn't get to read all the documents during the budget sessions, but, you know, I know Ontario, I believe, has, offers broadband through the city. You know, I don't know how much money that brings into the city, but that, that maybe that you didn't look at enough revenue avenues as opposed to just going for the cutting. Because I think broadband is something, I don't know how, you know, what, what that would take for you to do, but that you really, you know, rent a registry, I still believe in that. I still believe that landlords should be, you should get a couple of million dollars out of that for a rental registry, and you'd be able to, you know, add back a lot of the programs that you cut, the $35,000 here and the $40,000 there. I agree with every, absolutely, everything he said. I think you, you really need to be very creative with the getting more revenue as opposed to going this way. Yeah, I just, and I think that the, you did a fantastic job. This is the opposite of spending like drunken sailors, which is, you know, how I usually come up here and say, you're spending like drunken sailors, but I thought he did, you know, you did a fabulous job, your whole team. But I think you really have to, you know, look at, look at something else. You have to get money here, because just as Mr. Garpetian says, what if this doesn't bounce back? What if it even gets worse? What if spending gets worse? What if people spend, you know, even less? You'll lose even more in sales tax. So you really have to look at, how can we bring money, money in as opposed to cuts which are necessary, but still.
I agree with this gentleman. Thank you. Thank you. We do have a caller as well, Mike Mohill. Mike, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, we do have a caller as well, Mike Mohill. Hi there, councilmember.
We can't really hear you, can you speak up?
Lower your TV, Mike.
Hi, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. Can you still hear you?
Lower your TV, Mike.
Oh, okay, okay, hang on, hang on. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. City does not have a revenue problem, it has an expense problem, starting off with the bike lanes. We don't need bike lanes. It's a luxury that we don't need. The fact that you're going to have it, for example, on Lockers Center Avenue, should be eliminated. Anywhere with this thing called bike lanes throughout this... Anywhere with this thing called bike lanes throughout the city is a luxury. We need the money for the basic stuff and not bike lanes. Where's the survey, Mr. Brotman? You're going to see most people do not want bike lanes. Where do you find the bikers on the street? Oh, by the way, why don't we have a thing called a license to ride a bicycle? And we can charge the bike riders $25 a year, or $50 or $100. Why not? You need revenue. Let's start with the people that you like, Mr. Brotman, the bicycle riders. We don't have a revenue problem, councilmember. It's an expense problem. Thank you.
And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman.
Okay. Start off saying thank you to everyone that worked on this. I've now been through five of these, I guess, and they're always hard. But yeah, this one was like no other. So, so thank you. Yeah, we're all concerned, and not just for the next five years, for the next 10 years or even beyond. And, and it's not just about the economy. It's about our increasing pension obligations. And we've known that for a long, long time. And I'm glad we're finally kind of sounding willing to face that, that fact. So yes, we have a spending problem, but the spending problem is, is, is the pensions, bike lanes. We don't spend almost anything on that. It's a drop in the bucket. But this is going to go on for a long time because of the, kind of the pension hump that was called out by the, by the Blue Ribbon Commission. We know that this is going to be a significant problem into the mid 2030s, maybe, maybe beyond, before it starts to ease. So, you know, we're going to really need to look at revenues because a lot of these expenses are not controllable. There's nothing we can do about these historic promises that were made to our employees for, for their pensions. So we have a spending problem, yes. But the solution has to be both being smart about how we spend money, but also very much so about new revenues. And the new revenues, you know, have to come from a combination of business activities. And we've talked about many, many of them, such as our parking lots, leasing those out, more hotels, billboards, we've gone through the whole list. And yes, we have talked about broadband. And we're also going to have to look at new taxes. And I think that there's probably a consensus that the logical thing to do is first go for the quarter cent sales tax next year because the fact is that if we don't act on that, we, we end up most likely losing it. But I don't think it can end there. I think we do have to look at other revenue sources over time because this is a structural and ongoing issue. Anyway, I'll leave, I'll leave that there. I want to say, I have two other things. One, there are some things that I don't like in this budget. I think we could probably all say that. The one thing, I guess, that bothers me most is how we are deferring maintenance, how we are balancing our budget through deferred maintenance, particularly on our roadways. This is kind of, you know, a fool's process in a sense because we're, we're just pushing that cost onto future years and future generations, perhaps. And it's going to cost more as our roads deteriorate to bring them to the condition that we have committed, that we, we want to maintain them at. So I don't like that we're balancing the budget on the back of deferring basic maintenance. Postponing projects is a different issue, but deferring the basic maintenance, our roads, our sewers, and other things, I think is really troublesome. And, and we are doing it on our roads, and it is going to have an impact on our roads. But as we've all said, you know, there are things, there are things we don't like. But overall, I think the budget is, is good. It's what it needs to be. And, and we have to come to a consensus, so I do support it. The last thing I want to mention is with the public benefit charge. So I do have a concern there, not with the, with approving the appropriation of 9.3 million, but the specific programs, because we do know that GWP is going to be coming back to us with a revised set of programs. What I want to avoid is the sense that in approving the budget, we are approving those specific programs. I don't want to see us launching programs that may not be the right programs for us. And, and so what I would ask is, you know, we appropriate the money, continue to run existing programs. If, if it makes sense time-wise, continue to work on these new programs and, and just kind of work on developing them. But don't launch anything until you've come back to us and we've approved a new set of expenditures and programs in the PBC budget. You're probably already thinking that way. I just want to make sure that that's crystal clear. So that's basically all I have.
I would like to thank the finance team. Yes. I'm not going to make any questions, if you have. Okay, okay.
Well, before my comments, the one thing that I did note on the PBC, and I do agree with Mr. Brotman, but I had mentioned that the ones that are for the business community, we should be getting input from them. I know that you had some programs with respect to the restaurant industry, and I think it would be best if you all met with them, met with our restaurant owners and see if those are the things that are needed and required from them versus maybe other kind of equipment. I did have a conversation with our mayor earlier today, and I had a conversation with our city manager. But it should come as no surprise that I'm not going to be supporting this proposed budget today. From the start of this process, I have said that this budget was built upside down. The budget presented focused on cuts instead of getting us to do the real work of examining how we can generate new revenue, restructure long-term financing, or responsibly pause large projects. I asked for additional sessions to dig deeper into what's actually and exactly what's keeping our city moving forward and asked for buckets that reflected our city's reality, including must haves, need to have, nice to have buckets, but that also didn't happen. The council doesn't manage the day-to-day budget. We get a few updates each time, each budget update. So yes, I was asked, shocked as many of you, when we learned about the deficit. I've said this many times, it's, it was unacceptable to me that for the last several years, we haven't had a permanent qualified finance director. And I want to take this opportunity to truly thank Mr. Taktalian for stepping in for this very big role. And I'll be honest with you, if I was in your position, I wouldn't have taken it just because I don't have the technical finance background. I don't want to ignore that the projections have been incorrect year after year for the last 10 years, something that our city manager has also acknowledged. So now we're making cuts based on unreliable forecasting, and for me, that's dangerous. We should be prioritizing the revenue items coming back so we can close the $34 million gap as a starter. And that $34 million gap should be referenced every time one of those items come up. I think this budget, as written, sets our staff up to fail. Our CDD staff is being cut. Even though this council has made streamlining and permitting and supporting our economic development a priority, the public's expectations aren't decreasing. They still expect fast turnaround on permits and responsive services. Cutting staff while maintaining high demands only ensures delays, frustrations, and burnout. The same is true for public safety. This budget calls for cuts to police personnel and eliminates the long-awaited communications director, both for the city and the police department. For three years now, I've been told that a plan is being put together to hire a communications lead. Now that's on the chopping block. That, for me, is unacceptable. We're the fourth-largest city in LA County. During the wildfires, or more recently during the ICE raids, it was our communications team, especially an outside contracted lead, who helped strategize and maintain calm and provide timely, accurate information. To not permanently staff these functions in the era of social media and fast-moving misinformation is not only short-sighted, but it's reckless. This budget also proposes eliminating our legislative consultant and lobbyist roles. These roles are critical not just in shaping policies that impact Glendale, but in securing state and federal funding. We simply can't afford to leave that kind of opportunity on the table as I see it. This budget, this budget, once again, allocates $0 for programming or support for women and girls. We can't say we care about reducing domestic violence. Say some concerned words when we get the status of women report, while year after year, we fail to back that with even the modest investment. This budget was supposed to include a one full-time position dedicated only to working for the CSW. We're also ignoring the economic realities facing our residents and our small businesses. People are putting utility bills on their credit cards, rents on ever-climbing, rents that are ever-climbing. Some are being pushed out of Glendale and others into homelessness as the report presented today. I've heard directly from local business owners who say recent immigration enforcement actions have devastated their foot traffic and revenues while they have $50,000, $30,000 rents a month to pay. And yet, this budget does nothing to respond to these realities. I want to be very clear, I'm not walking away from this process. I'm still ready to be here every day for the next several weeks to do the hard work that this moment requires. But I can't in good conscience support a budget that's built on flawed assumptions, that contradicts our city's priorities, stated values, that cuts the very tools our staff need to succeed, and that continues to overlook the most vulnerable in our community. I'm happy to approve a stopgap resolution if any of my colleagues are willing to entertain that and work through it with our new finance department director. Thank you.
Thank you. You mean like Congress, like a continuing resolution where you just continue the budget?
You, you can work through the budget. You can do a stopgap resolution, allowing the budget and the allocations from the last year to move forward as you work through the details. And you, and that requires a set time that this council can put.
Well, I would, thank you for those comments. I would first like to thank the finance team, everyone from John Taktalian, well, actually above John, the city manager, if I could say that. John, everyone on the staff for going through this process. This is, I was just counting, this is probably my 70th budget for different agencies through the years, over the last 20 years, actually. And I think we've done a very deep dive in this process, more so than agencies with budgets 10 times what we have here in, in Glendale. It's unfortunate where we are currently. I think we all want to provide as much service and programming to our residents as we can. In fact, that's all we do. We don't sell products. We provide services to the residents to improve their quality of life. And I think we've done a pretty good job up to this point because the satisfaction survey does reflect that, what was it, eight, eight out of 10 people are, are very satisfied, satisfied or very satisfied with the level of service. But there do, you know, there does come a time where any agency, and this agency is not exempt, comes into difficulties. And I think the difficulties can best be, I mean, for those, it gets a little confusing, it gets a little wonky about policy and details. But I think page seven of the slideshow really is, is an important, perhaps the most important slide. This is where we got out of whack. We, every year, we have to project what we think the revenues and appropriations are going to be. And we base that on past expenditures and revenues as well as what policy changes we want to make. And we just got, we just got hit hard on the revenue side. Yes, property taxes, thank goodness, continue to rise in Glendale. True, many are not turning over their properties because of the disparity in interest rates and pricing. So that 1.2 of an extra increase that we had not anticipated could, in any other financial situation, be much higher. Sales taxes, that's a big hit. And we're still trying to figure out what, what the issues were with that. This is maybe the post-COVID doldrums. All that stimulus money may have dried up in the region. Utility users' tax, boom, down a million. Building and planning permits, people are building less. Boom, another one. The landfill, host assessment and tipping fees. Well, so there's less tipping fees, less garbage is going into the landfill because we're maybe doing a better job of conservation or recycling. The landfill, I think, is a, is a hot, is a sore subject. We said we're going to close it, so not only in the future are we going to have a dramatic zeroing out of our tipping fees, but we're going to be paying a lot more in our waste disposal fees because all the garbage that we used to put in there are going to have to be trucked or freighted out of the area. So that's a very, you know, to me, that's a red flag right there. We need to think about what we're going to do with that, if anything. The appropriations, unfortunately, are increasing. The nondiscretionary maintenance and operation, the salary adjustments, the reduction in estimated vacancy savings, GPD overtime, $5 million. Well, when we had that big rally outside Glendale, and we were lucky, folks. We could have had many more demonstrations in the city of Glendale, much more serious than what we had on June 14th. But we're expecting our police officers to be there to maintain the order, the peace, and that costs money. And we wouldn't, no one on this council would give up the safety of our residents and our businesses for exchange for a reduction in that. And it, you know, it goes on and on. This, this is already built on top of salary increases with our labor groups. It's built on top of a very, I think, I can call them unfair, PERS assessments against the city. A PERS board which, you know, if you had just closed your eyes and put your money, put the investment on any sort of stock index fund, whether it's Standard and Poor's, NASDAQ, or Dow, would be returning benefits several times higher than what the geniuses at the PERS board have returned to us. We just are at a point where we can't continue to increase services, although many of us want to. You know, the request to have a, a full-time this and a full-time that, we just don't have the funding for that. In fact, someone that's been around the block several times can remember in 2014 where we had a workforce, FTE, full-time employee workforce of close to 2,000. And it was during that budget crisis that we reduced our workforce by about 25%. We dropped to 1,500. That was the only option that we had because we were in a very tough situation. I'm not saying we do that now, but the fact is that we may have to take serious look at paring back some of the services that we provide our employees. Not in this budget. This budget is, is pretty much packaged and ready to go. But in future years, I think that's something we need to look at. Not to mention the fact Not to mention the fact that we're cutting out much of our CIP, our capital improvement programs, to dump back into our general fund to try and cover it. I think we do need to look hard at additional sales tax revenues, whether the voters will increase a quarter cent sales tax. We went to them several years ago. They were generous in approving what we did. We may have to go back again for another quarter cent. I think we need to take a hard look at our GWP transfer. The residents of Glendale, twice, voted to operate a power plant, an energy utility, with the intention of returning 25% of the profits back to the general fund. That's why Glendale got involved in the power business. Other cities have other sources of income. Santa Monica has the beach. Anaheim has their stadium. Inglewood has their stadiums. Commerce has their casinos. Well, Glendale was a little more conservative. We said, well, let's have a power plant and provide power. So I think we need to look ahead at whether any additional transfers are possible. And that's a whole complex issue. You just don't say we're going to transfer more. There's a rate study that was done. We may have to look at that again. It's a difficult budget. It's nothing that I'm happy about because we do see a reduction in these certain areas that I just described, to patch holes. We're going to have some difficult decisions to make, both on the revenue side, increasing revenues, and in how we spend the, spend those general funds. So it's, it's something that I do have to, and the manner in which we develop the budget, I do have to give deference, and I've seen it done many different ways. But in here, in this city, I do have to give my deference to the Finance Department and their process and protocols in developing this budget and coming to present it to us. I will be voting for this budget. It's going to be some tough years ahead. I don't see us expanding programs. I see us cutting back on other areas where, I mean, we just earlier had this great investment in a park, in the Joanne Fabric site. I don't think we can do that next year or the year after. We're really going to have to tighten our belts. But it is what we were presented with. Staff and council do have a budget which is balanced, although we're dipping into our reserve funds to make it balanced to a much smaller degree than it was originally intended. And intended, I mean, that 34.3 million at the bottom there. We're down to 4 million. It's the best situation that we could have come up with at this point to save the city from any further difficulties. So I'm, I'm prepared to support the recommendation to approve the budget.
Just a quick comment. I also want to thank staff for putting this budget together. I know it wasn't easy. The City Manager, the entire team, thank you. Mr. Taktalian, you acted as an acting director of Finance. Maybe this was not in your purview as a Assistant City Manager, but this budget is not any less than any other budget that I've seen. This is my seventh one, not the 70th one, but the seventh one. This was as comprehensive, as detailed as any budget that I've seen. You've done a great job. I want to congratulate you as well because this wasn't easy to take over the entire department in a short period of time. Am I happy about everything in this budget? No, I'm not. When we're cutting small areas like, as I mentioned, Brand Boulevard, holiday lights, even, you know, leadership training, HR contractual services, there's so many items in this one-page list. And then we add $1 million to active transportation implementation. Am I happy about that? Do I agree to it today? No, but it doesn't mean that I'm not going to vote for the entire budget overall because of one or two items that I'm not happy about. This is a, this is something that is going to affect the entire city, the entire operation. And one other thing about sales tax being, being put on the ballot for residents to decide, even if you put, you have the consensus to put that on the ballot in 2026 by the time, if it gets approved by the time that's implemented, that by the time you receive revenues, it's going to take at least two years. But until today, and then, we still have our expenses and our responsibility. So that's what I'm saying. From tomorrow, we have to look into every program we have, every project we have, and make sure that next year, our deficit is much lower than what we, what we are anticipating today. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to support this budget as well.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Asatrian.
Yeah. So I had also inquired about, because I am very concerned about the communications staffing cuts. I had asked for the contract and details for Mr. Lorenz that has been assisting us. The total amount for that contract was $148,000, but the current expiration date on that is June 21. And I still see Mr. Lorenz here. Can our City Manager speak to what the plan is? How long we still have him?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Asatrian, that's something that our consultant and I will have to get together and come up with a strategy. I do realize that contract expired. We may be able to extend it, depending on the services that we need him for. He and his team have already completed a very comprehensive communication guideline and plan that will be used consistently across all the departments. It looks really good. I have to go through it and consult with our consultant as to the next steps.
Okay, so I'm going to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Lorenz.
But not bon voyage necessarily. We're going to decide that.
Yeah, I want to clarify something because I'm hearing about cuts to police and cuts to fire and cuts to staff. We're not cutting any staff. We're actually adding 23 positions to police. So I don't understand these comments that I've heard from my colleague, and I also, I think, heard them from the public. That's, you know, what we've managed to do here is squeeze a lot of little projects and programs and find cheaper ways to do things and, and preserve the basic, preserve the employees so that we can maintain the same level of quality services. We can't necessarily grow them, but we can maintain them. So I think, I want the public to be clear. We're not cutting staff. We're not cutting police. We're not cutting fire. We are increasing police significantly. Okay, so that's one thing. The other thing I want to say is that whole list of things, Councilmember Asatrian, that you would like us to invest in, okay, I want that whole list too. Plus, I want us to fund our PED plan. I want us to fund our bike plan. I want us to fund climate adaptation. I want us to fund affordable housing. I want housing subsidies. I want all those things. But the revenues aren't there. And the idea that we can just magically come up with revenues is, is completely unrealistic. Even that sales tax revenue, as Councilmember Garpetian said, this is not going to go onto the ballot until 2026, a year from now. Maybe it gets approved, maybe it doesn't. If it gets approved, it takes time to implement. All these other things, like our parking lots, everything else we've talked about, these new revenues, these take time to develop. We're building a budget today. And unless we are going to draw down 30-some million dollars from our reserves in one year, which I think is highly irresponsible, I don't know what else we could have done. So I think that we have a prudent and responsible budget. If magically we can come up with some windfall set of revenues in this coming fiscal year, we can go back and ask for additional appropriations. But at this point, we have to plan based on our best guess, erring on the side of being conservative, but our best guess as to what our revenues are going to be over the coming year. And, and I think that's what we've done. And so I don't like it either. I don't, you know, I want to do 20 more things. But this is what we're facing, and we need to be realistic. And, and that's why I'm supporting the budget.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just briefly, I want to underscore what Councilmember Brotman indicated. And I have said this before, and I want our employees to hear it. Every effort that I, the team, the Finance Department, and every department head has engaged in was in an effort to prevent layoffs. Had we not gone through this exercise, I guarantee you, we had to go down that path. As the city of Los Angeles, as you know, has declared a state of fiscal emergency, and they're planning on cutting 600, laying off 600 employees. So all the efforts that we made is to prevent that happening in Glendale. And the such budget situation we're in, it's not unique to Glendale. You've seen other cities go through this. And I have also mentioned this before. We are not eliminating any positions. We are defunding the 33 vacant positions. That's a temporary measure. Until such time, hopefully, we will have a steady stream of revenue that we can be at a place that we can consider filling those positions as critical as they are for the department's operations.
I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Mr. Garpetian.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
No.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kastakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, staff, for putting the time in. And what's next, Madam Clerk?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We currently have four speaker cards on this item. The first speaker is Beth Brooks. Following Beth Brooks is Dawn Margolin.
Yeah, just while I have the opportunity, because the police and the fire departments were here, my daughter is, I'm going to cry now, of course, I always cry, is 28 years old. And when she was four months old, she stopped breathing. And she's alive because of them. They came in one second, and they talked to me on the phone because I was so beside myself. Had to give her CPR, and they were there in one second. I took her to the hospital. And I want to thank the fire department and the police department in Glendale because they're incredible. And I'll never forget, it was just her birthday, so I'm just, I'm just reminded of that, that they, I think I blinked my eyes and they were there. They were there in a second. And they knew exactly what to tell me to save her. I, so, you know, I'm emotional. But, okay, so that's the first thing, because they're here, I wanted to say that. The second thing that hasn't been brought up yet is the, I was at the No Kings protest, which didn't make me mad, really. It made me sad because it was such a, you know, the cognitive dissonance between people saying that somebody is doing something illegal when they're actually supporting something that's illegal was lost on everybody, you know? So that was really kind of just, I just watched in amusement. I'll be honest, I watched in amusement. I thought it was disturbing that we had two city council members, one who was there and one who gave an, whose speech was read. And I know everybody can come on a personal level, but it was very disturbing to me because what you were actually supporting was, was, was something that was really against, against legal, the law. And it was disturbing to see people who are involved in a governmental body to, to be supporting that. And again, with the cognitive dissonance, it just didn't even make sense. It's like, I support, the president is not following the law, but we don't want you guys to follow the law because then that's okay. We won't even say the word. We won't even use the word. So that was, that was just, you know, just is what it is. I've been dealing with that for years, watching people and they have their very illogical ideas about things that don't pass any, any test of reason or rationality. And that's, you know, and that's fine. I also would like to suggest maybe that on YouTube, I mean, just the way we're talking about, you know, when I come here and things I don't understand, or you have it in HTML and you have documents, if you had some sort of a podcast, or you went on a podcast, and people could call in with questions and say, you know, how, how do these things work? I mean, I know on YouTube you can see these four-hour sessions that nobody wants to see. Trust me, nobody wants to see this. But if you actually went on a podcast, or had a podcast, or went on several podcasts, not somebody who's friendly to you, you know what I mean? Like, all different kinds of people with different kinds of views, and they asked you questions. I mean, how does this work? If you pass the budget now, can you actually add a revenue source, like, in the middle of the year? I mean, are you allowed to do that? I don't even know. Can you suddenly say, hey, you know what? Let's just see if we can add the broadband? I mean, are you allowed to do that? Are you allowed to say, you know what? We gave you $20 million, but, you know, now that we thought about it, it's probably, you know, you really don't really need that 20 million. Are you allowed to take away 5 million? Are you allowed to shuffle it during the year as it goes? Are you allowed to say, we didn't spend it now, let's push it to the next year? I have no idea because that flexibility, with what Ellen was saying about a program-based budget, also, I think, would help people understand more how you're spending money. Because we don't understand it as far as a department, but I think we'd understand it more as far as a program. Like, you know, we're going to spend the money on doing this on Brand Boulevard, and now that's, that's something you get your teeth into, you can understand. But if you just say it goes to this department, and they're spending it on a capital improvement project, blah, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't, people can't relate to that. It has to be on a level that people can relate to. So I would suggest you do something like that, that you have a, you set up a podcast, or you go on people's podcasts, not necessarily Joe Rogan, but you go on people's podcasts, and so that people start to understand what's happening in how the city council works. And that's it, and I'm sorry for crying yet again. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dawn Margolin.
Do they still call you the Rackmaster?
Yes, Your Honor, I am. And one thing I'll never forget, last time I spoke nine years ago, and I haven't spoken since, you said to me, "Don't speak. We've already decided." Well, good evening, good long evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. As I said, it's been nine years in February since I spoke. And I'm very glad, I heard you on the radio, and you said that we're going to cancel our contract with ICE to use our country-club jails, which give three meals a day, and not letting detainees use our jail, we dodged a bullet. Because when I was here two weeks ago, the police were ready for a problem. But since there's no detainees here, we have no problem. So it was a win-win. Second thing, Brand, Glen Oaks. Glen Oaks, I call, we'll call it Speedway Glen Oaks. It's like a racetrack. So I think we need more police on Glen Oaks. And since we have almost enough police, maybe that could be a possibility. And last night, I went to Ralph's on Central, and this guy was speeding through the parking lot. I was thinking, wow, I'm glad I'm older. I don't do that anymore. All right. Next thing is the house next door to me sold. And they're going to make it into a duplex. So... So they've put in permits to redo the house. Well, if a permit isn't done correctly, it could take a long time. In the meantime, the yard, it doesn't look good. So I was wondering, even though we've talked so much about budget, not having the money, to have the permit department maybe drive by some of these houses where there's permits in the works and see if they look really, really bad. And also, if squatters moved in, because they can see the house is vacant, and they decided, well, it's warm, but we're going to cook. So we're going to cook with a fire. And then, LA is known now for fires. And we were lucky in Glendale, but if they had a fire because of cooking in the house that's vacant, it could be a real problem. So someone should think about that. But then again, do we have the money in the budget? Because I heard maybe an hour of budget, and that's a problem. So if you had someone checking these properties that are waiting for remodeling, is the money in the budget to pay someone to do it? That's my question. So it's nice seeing you again, and I hope in nine years, I'm still alive, to see you again, Mr. Mayor. You've been the mayor for a long time, off and on. But I also miss Paula Devine, Laura Friedman, and Dave Weaver. They were cool people. Thanks for listening.
So you can speak to one of our staff if you have a particular address that you want us to take a look at, and we can do that.
I didn't want to do that. I was hoping you would inspect a lot of properties, but I will, if someone wants to know.
If it's a safety hazard, we definitely don't want anything.
Yeah, they can look and see if it is.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we're very progressive in our enforcement.
Oh, I know. I take care of my house. I just don't want to make an enemy out of a new neighbor before they move in.
No, I mean, progressive is that small steps leading towards greater enforcement.
All right, thanks for your service. Thanks for all your services, because it's a long day.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Cameron Needles. You have five minutes.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Cameron Adler. I live in the Chevy Chase Canyon. And I just wanted to bring to light an issue that I've seen get slightly, in my head, worse over the last few months and years, which is, I'm sure it's come across your desk already, with people complaining of the speeding and racing down the canyon. But I have an issue with that too. I get it, it's fun. I have a fast car. It's entertaining, not in a residential neighborhood. My biggest complaint as of now is the amount of accidents on the street now. My neighbors lost two cars, completely totaled. I just lost a car on Friday that got completely totaled and pushed two houses down the street. That's a 6,000-pound SUV. So that was speed, not paying attention, multitude of things. If someone were to have been getting in or out of, or just sitting in, they could have been seriously injured or killed. Neighbors farther up the street in the 2,400 block of Chevy Chase lost two cars in one sitting. Another neighbor of mine had his truck rear-ended. I can go down the list of many people I know that have had cars damaged, destroyed, or completely pushed into someone else's house. Cars have entered into houses. A house down the street had their garage crashed into multiple times, and that caused the speed limit to go from 35 down to 30. Now with a 25 mile an hour speed limit, it is what it is. But I'm just wanting to bring attention to the fact that I think that the car accident rate is increasing a lot. Being on phones and fiddling with things in cars isn't the greatest thing on windy roads. I'm not sure what could be done. I know through previous encounters with the Chevy Chase Estates Association that things have been done to look into doing other speed abatement things, speed bumps shot down because it slows traffic too much with restrictions. Not sure if that was viable or not. But I know you guys have done multiple studies into solutions for this, but I'm just wanting to bring it up again because I am starting to realize and see that there are quite a bit of accidents happening again. And considering it's in a residential neighborhood, it's a bit concerning when there's one to two cars lost completely every single month on a residential street. So that is the gist of what I wanted to get across tonight. So thank you so much, and yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And lucky for you, our chief and two of our top sergeants are in the audience, and I'm sure they heard your concerns directly to them.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
We have two callers. One is Sarah. Sarah, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Thank you, thank you to the council. I wanted to speak on two items tonight. The first is to request that the city consider joining Pasadena and Burbank in rejecting and denouncing officially federal immigration raids in our city. I appreciate that Councilmember Asatrian spoke on the impact that these raids are having on our local businesses. And I would emphasize the human impact of these raids and the fear that is spread, the inability to participate in the economics of the city, since we can see that those are the priorities of this council. For a city that is looking at generating revenue in a city that is comprised of over 50% immigrants, I would urge the council to consider how many businesses within the city that are contributing revenue, maybe immigrant-owned or powered by the labor and efforts of immigrants who are directly threatened by federal raids, and take action to support those members of the community and reject federal overreach in the operating of our city. The second item that I would like to address is the repeated comments by Mayor Najarian, which appear to target individual named, sometimes otherwise identifiable residents of the city, often LGBTQ leaders in the city, whom the mayor repeatedly has accused of crimes, has spoken about legal proceedings or charges that don't appear to be publicized anywhere, and the apparent animus that the mayor has against specific groups and individuals in this city, and his use of his platform to exercise that animus. And I would urge his fellow council members to consider censuring the mayor for his abdication of his responsibility and his direct targeting of individual residents of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final caller is Crystal. Crystal, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. I'm calling to speak in support of immigrant communities here in Glendale and for the safety of all residents of Glendale. I'm an American citizen. I've resided in Glendale for over a decade. I felt pretty safe here and connected to and invested in our community. Earlier this week, Councilmember Asatrian made a statement on Instagram in response to ICE activity, saying that the city ended its agreement with the government, which is fantastic, and all residents should be able to go ahead and call the police when we need them. As a citizen, I know I can. I've called GPD in the past, and I have to praise their excellent response time and the care they showed to me and my family. I want to know that the city of Glendale and all of its services will be the same for each and every resident. Not only citizens, residents. I don't think we need to get hung up on particular statuses of people here who serve our community, not just serve it, who live in it, who make our lives better. They're people. Each person is a universe. You know, what's going on right now is unfathomable, and it's terrifying. And I need you all to act. I need you to step up the way Pasadena and Burbank passed and extended SB 54 to every city department in order not cooperate with ICE in any way. We affirm and expand SB 54. Please do this immediately. If we can join our neighboring cities, we can grow that protection in LA County. Please do this now. We need you to protect everyone here, my neighbors, my friends, their families, before another moment passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is all.
Mr. Kasakian.
Thanks. So on, to the gentleman who was here who had his car hit totaled on Chevy Chase, I'm sorry for that happening. And those of us who've lived in Glendale, who've traveled on that street through the canyon, know how dangerous it can be, how high speeds can go without even noticing until perhaps it's too late. Or some people are just reckless drivers. There's that certainly reality as well. One of the things I'd like to see if staff can look into, or if we need to have a discussion about this, which is a chronic problem, I think every so often we hear about this, is in other parts of the county, in the middle of the road where the dividing line is, there are bollards placed, both to break it up in terms of visually, but also in speed. I've seen it in Los Angeles, in neighborhoods, in Hancock Park, and other places where they must also have speeding issues. Again, I don't, we have, we talked about putting the, those markers in some residential streets that were more permanent markers for what we had during the COVID lockdown period. I know some of those are metal. What I'm talking about are these medium-height, rather wide bollards, and they're put in the road, and it causes you to slow down because you don't want to hit them. And of course, coming down on those steep hills on a slalom, sometimes people go over the lines. This will prevent that as well, make people perhaps more cautious. So if it's something that could work, we should look into it. I know it'll cost money, but this is the kind of thing that we ought to look into trying to do. And then, secondly, I'm sorry, one of the speakers left who talked about people protesting and, you know, why they were protesting, things that are, in her words, the law or the legal actions. I would only caution her or remind her, because those who don't study history are doomed to repeat it, that some of the worst atrocities committed against our fellow human beings were done legally by governments and their agents, acting under the law. And so just because something is legal doesn't make it moral or right. And I personally believe that any actions that separate parents from their children is callous, and if that's what you support, then I'm not on your team.
I just wanted to make a clarifying point. I think I've done several statements at this point. The, one of the callers had noted about being a US citizen and therefore feeling comfortable to call our PD. My statement clearly stated that our police are here to protect and serve our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. The city and the police department does not look into any immigration. And so anybody, regardless of status, an immigration status specifically, should feel safe and comfortable to call our police department. I also emphasize that, given the raids and what we're seeing a lot online, you will always be able to identify our police officers. They will never be wearing masks. They will identify themselves. And should you find yourself in a situation where you're being arrested, the reason will be given, and all the laws and protocols will be followed. So just wanted to clarify that.
That concludes our business.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.